Good morning.
Morning. Good morning.
Julian, if we could get one of these for each commissioner? Okay, good deal, thank you. Good morning, I'm gonna call the meeting to order for the Board of County Commissioners for Tuesday, June the 11th, 2023, and start by asking Mr. Herbert Johnson Jr. if he would come forward for our invocation this morning, which will be followed by a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Bill Pickens. Please rise if you can.
Good morning, every here, by every I close. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for the privilege of being able to serve. We thank you that the term greatness is designated to those who are willing to serve. I pray now, Father, that you will bless our service to our community. I pray that you will bless all of our county commissioners. I pray that you will bless all of our constituents and residents. And I pray that you will continue to bless the work that you have assigned us to do. It is in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank you, Commissioner Pickens. The chair will entertain a motion for approval of minutes as listed on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes that are listed in our packet.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved unanimously. We're going to recess the Board of County Commissioners meeting and convene the Port Authority meeting, and the chair will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the Port Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes stated on our agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion is unanimous. At this time, I'm gonna call for public comment on Port Authority items. Is there anybody here this morning that would like to speak on Port Authority items? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and I'll ask Sam to come forward. Morning, Sam.
Good morning, members of the Authority. With me are Mr. Keith and Mr. Schneider from Victoria Marine. In your packet today, you will notice that there is an offer on the table from Victoria Marine to lease the warehouse inside the port enclosure at a rate of $5,000 a month for a two-year lease with three one-year option extensions. And as well, you'll note further down that in lieu of a security deposit, as was done before, they will be conducting some repairs to the building that are necessary. And you have a security deposit, this was done with the previous tenant as well. And I will entertain any questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions at this time, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do, Sam, thank you. On our last statement under the summary highlights, Victoria Marine has been informed of the long-term plans for the port. What does that mean? Because we're extending their, you know, and I want to make sure we get proper tenant that we have the ability to say sever our relationship, if you will.
Sure, no, basically, I let them know I was being transparent, and that's what the statement was, me being transparent was then was the county's intent was the port, and, you know, was the dredging, the commercialization and utilization of the port as a commercial port. I just want, that's what I was meant by that.
Do we have to offer the one-year extensions, or could we do something? I feel like it's kind of long, but it's fine with me, don't get me wrong, I'm not opposed to it. I just think it's maybe, with our plans that we're trying to do, it might, you're out now six years, if not mistaken. So, I mean, that's pretty long, sometimes the government's short, but it could be long if we really get that port moving pretty fast.
Well, we're hopeful, and like I said, it's two years, and then the extensions, it's up contingent to both of us. You know, we can tell them, you know, this is happening too fast, we're not gonna be able to continue this.
Okay, so it's contingent on both of us accepting that next one, those three one-year terms?
Correct.
Okay, I'm good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions at this time? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the lease of the warehouse space inside the port enclosure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Adams, aye?
Will this include the, like, how much of the parking and stuff for access to the port that we have, does this include?
We would still have access to the facilities. Mr. Keith here might be able to answer how much of the parking they're gonna use at this time better than I can. I don't believe that, are you talking about the parking inside?
Well, we got a narrow path that gets to the...
It's, you've got a driveway, and then on the side between where you would normally drive and the warehouse, there's ample room there for parking for vehicles for who would be working in the warehouse itself. So, we would not, we would still have parking area. The docking part area would probably not be used for parking, so if we're unloading or uploading materials onto a vessel, that should not affect it.
So, under normal operations, we're gonna keep between the building and the water clear, unless they're loading or unloading something into the water?
Right, we'd work with them, yes.
Those would still be, it's my understanding those are still common areas along the dock and the back. They have access, but so would we if we needed to or were to also.
Yes, we're not surrendering access to the docking area at the present time.
I guess what I'm looking, what I'm thinking is, I don't want it to be a situation where stuff spills out of the warehouse and starts getting stored on the lot.
I don't think so, I think it's basically we're renting them the building and enough parking for their employees to go in the area.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Keith, for coming this morning, thank you, Sam. Is there any general discussion by the board at this time on Port Authority items? Hearing none, I will adjourn the Port Authority and reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting. And I thought we were gonna put planning and development items at the end of the consent agenda from now on. So, we'll do this today, maybe it won't be too bad this morning, but we definitely want to get them behind presentations from now on to where people aren't sitting around here, you know, like it happened to us a couple of meetings ago when we actually didn't get to give out some of the presentations because the people had to leave. So, we're gonna change that around hopefully in the future where at least it's behind presentations for planning and zoning. But we'll do it in order this morning. Impact fee moratorium extension, it's on page 22 of your packet. Basically, this is, this is something we had already talked about and agreed to already. This is just, we had to do the ordinance this morning, and it has to be a public hearing. So, if anybody doesn't have any questions, then I will ask, is there any public comment on this particular item? On the public hearing for the impact fee moratorium extension ordinance? Seeing none, do I need a motion to move this forward, Rich? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of an ordinance to Putnam County Board of County Commissioners continuing a moratorium of the collection of impact fees and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 2023-006.
Hannah, need you to read the inordinance of the board.
I do.
Okay, sorry, missed it.
I read it a little bit out of order, but...
Okay, not a problem, yes, sir, that'll work, thank you. Is there any further discussion, I need a second on the motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. It's not in this motion, but I do believe that we instructed staff to look at a feasibility study for an impact fee further down the road.
Before next year, yes, sir, I think they're supposed to look at it between now and the extension time next year.
Okay, all right, that's it.
May I say?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you know, the reason we have, people in the audience are watching might say, you gotta do another study. You know, yes, every time we look at impact fees, we have to do a current study, and that's by state law. So, you know, it's a good thing that we're gonna look at it. I think some changes need to be done, but we'll wait till that study comes in to look at that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion. You're opposed, okay. Motion passes four to one. Okay, next item on the list, we have the rezoning, REZ 2303. I guess you're taking that Nancy, or Zach back, Nancy, okay.
I'll take it, Zach will hear if I need him. For the record, Nancy Brown, Planning and Development Services. Gonna present to you the ordinance for rezoning from R2 to C2, I'm sorry, to C3. I'll read the ordinance heading into the record. Ordinance number 2023-007, amending ordinance number 0518. An ordinance of the County of Putnam, State of Florida, amending the official zoning map for Putnam County Incorporated into ordinance 20-25-18, rezoning a 1.26 plus or minus acre parcel of land from residential 2, R2, to commercial general C3, providing for severability and effective date. Okay, the applicant is David Pepper. Again, the parcel is 1.26 acres of vacant parcel at 330 South Highway 17 in East Palatka. Again, the request is for a change in zoning from R2 to C3, which is general commercial. It does allow for the boat service and repair, however, any item listed in your staff report under C3 could be on that property. Excuse me. The parcel is located south of 17, south on 17, directly south of the Putnam County Fairgrounds. It's predominantly commercial in the surrounding areas. The applicant purchased the property across the street several years ago, and it allows for driving and store to boats. Currently, the designation is R2 on the property and doesn't allow for the boat repair and services, and that's the reason for the rezoning for the applicant. The portion of 17 corridor is predominantly commercial uses falling within the C2 and the C3 zoning categories. Next slide will show you, in the light blue outlines the actual property. Next slide will show you the future land use of the property, basically a servant service, a little bit of commercial to the north. And this slide will show you where the property is and its associated zoning district and the districts around, surrounding the property. The current future land use is urban service, which encourages infill in areas where infrastructure is available. Policy A.1.9.3A1, which is the urban service land use category, allows for neighborhood commercial and community commercial uses. Per section 4583 of the Land Development Code, general commercial C3 zoning designation allows for boat service and repair used by right in alliance with the proposed urban service future land use classification. The applicant will be required to provide buffering, at least a 10-foot wide vegetated buffering surrounding the residential use. A perimeter buffer is required along all vehicle use areas and parking areas as required by section 45512 of the Land Development Code. Type of buffering would be determined at the development review and may be determined additional buffering required, such as a solid fence and tree planting of eight-foot trees. I believe it's one every 10 feet, or something consistent with that. Funding recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning from R2 to C2 as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the applicable procedures and the Land Development Code. And at its May 10th meeting, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the request. Are there any questions for staff?
You just mentioned that the buffering and what have you, that it was necessary, that's by right. I mean, they have to do it by zoning and not by, it's not a contract or an obligation to do that.
By zoning code.
That's already included by the zoning change of the zoning classification.
By land development.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions of staff? Okay, is there anybody in presence today that would like to speak for or against this case? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move ordinance number 2023-007, amending ordinance number 05-18. An ordinance of the County of Putnam, State of Florida, amending the official zoning map for Putnam County Incorporated into Article 2 of the Putnam County Land Development Code. Ordinance number 2005-18, rezoning A.1.26 plus or minus acre parcel of land from residential 2, R2, to commercial general C3, providing for severability and effective date on case number REZ23-000003-Pepper.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Adams, aye?
My only concern for this, and I'm probably, I'm gonna be voting yes, but whenever we do these, the fear always is if this particular business doesn't succeed or something, and I hope they do great, and I think it's a great fit for that area. The alternative use is the C3. In this particular case where it is, I think most of those uses for C3 are, it's an adequate location for that anyhow. But I just like to voice that concern, or if we're doing any of these from residential to C3, seeing no residents here in that area objecting, and I haven't received anything of anyone objecting to this, I'm fine with it, but just always, we always have to think about what the other uses are in the district that we're going to. So, I just wanted to bring that up, thank you.
Okay, is there any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're going to move into item five, presentations, and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Pickens if he will read the proclamation.
Okay, Kevin, do you want to come up? Kevin Stevens with Park and Recreation with most of his staff. Julian, you want to join him at the podium, too? Before I read this proclamation, I am the chairman of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and honored to do so. We really have a very good board, and they work well together. And I just want to thank everybody with Parks and Recs for what you do. A lot of different facilities to take care of, and you do a great job with what we provide you with. So, I just want to thank everybody. Putnam County Proclamation number 2023-078. Designation of July is Park and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Putnam County, Florida, and whereas our parks and recreation is vitally important to establishing, maintaining the quality of life in our communities and ensuring our health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. Whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally and physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. Whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, and the attraction and retention of business, and crime reduction. Whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. Whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetated buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. Whereas parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children, adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Putnam County recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in Putnam County. Done, ordered, adopted since 11th day of July, 2023. Mr. Chairman, I make the recommendation that we adopt this proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously.
Commissioners, I'll take this opportunity to briefly just brag on the people you see standing behind you. Countywide, we have 277 acres of park and recreation space, not to include the buildings of the community centers that they maintain. The staff behind you maintains that on a daily basis. When they are not in the office or maintaining those fields, they are at the fields, making sure the referees are ready for game day, or that when we run out of coaches, they stand in for coaches. And without the faces that you see behind us, we would not be able to service the citizens that we do in Putnam County. So, although it's Park and Recreation Month, I'm gonna take the opportunity to also congratulate this department for all their hard work.
Yeah, I agree, thank you. Kevin, would you bring everybody forward here and let's get a picture?
Kevin, do you want to say a few things and introduce everybody?
Yes, sir, I could do that real quick. I would like to also thank the administration and the commission, of course, for the support you've given us over the past couple of years, financial support and otherwise. We got a lot of great things going on in the department. As Commissioner Pickens has said, we've got one of the best Parks Recreation Advisory Boards that we've had in a long time. They're very committed, and so they're doing a great job as well. Things are really clicking along for us in the department. And as Julian said, it wouldn't be possible without these people here. Some of our maintenance staff is, that we have that are out, you know, as Julian said, taking care of things every single day is Tim and Russ and Eli. Terry and Brian couldn't be here for other commitments. Joe is their boss, the maintenance manager over there. Katrina Williams, our office manager, who handles all the phone calls and grumpy, sometimes upset citizens about things. Paige and Dylan, who handles our athletics and aquatics programs, which actually, we gotta hurry up because Paige has got to get over to the pool, we got swim lessons going on right now. And so, you know, but these are the people that make things happen behind the scenes. So many family members and stuff show up, and things are just magically ready to go, you know? All the referees are there, and the balls are there, and the, you know, the field's been mowed, and to them, it's just magic. But there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes that makes that happen.
That's right.
And so, I want to express my support and admiration of them as well. And again, to thank you guys for the support you've given the department over the past couple of years also. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna take a five-minute recess before we go into a public comment on agenda items. Move on to item six on the agenda, which is public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board concerning the consent agenda. It is not reasonable to the board to engage in debate or deliberation. Please limit to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed in the, at the meeting room entrance and should be submitted prior to the deputy clerk, who sits on my left, your right, at the podium. Is there anybody this morning that would like to have public comment on consent agenda items? Did you turn in a card? No, you're good. No, you don't have to turn in a card. We just appreciate it when you do. Please come forward. And state your name and address for the record, please.
Timothy C. Hoteling, 105 Riverside Way, San Mateo. Ah, found it. There's a couple of things. I'm referring to the dog pound. Agenda item, animal services facility contract. My wife's done a lot of contracting over her professional career. She took a look and found many exceptions of concern, mostly just nomenclature, needs that would do well to be cleaned up. One of the big issues, the way I read it in my common language, is under the section that says purchase of major materials. Proposal price assumes that Putnam County will direct purchase major materials. There was no tax included in the proposal price. The way I read it is the county's gonna buy all the materials, and then the contractor, who you call a consultant, will put the buildings together. There's nowhere in there that says that the money that the county spends will be deducted from the bill. And I may be wrong, but I think that there's several things that would do well before you finish going down a road. In addition to that, I have concerns that there's nowhere, there's nothing that says that we're gonna abide by state statute of building codes. There's nothing that says we're gonna abide by any kind of standards of animal, I don't know the term, kennels, kenneling standards, but there are some stuff around there that I've forwarded that might do well. Doesn't make anything in the contract talking about a way to hose out the kennels, because they're talking about how your contractor says we're gonna have a thin layer slab, which will save him money, but I don't know how you're gonna have enough room so that you can get a trough or whatever, so that the staff can hose out and clean out the kennels. And mostly, I don't know these things, okay? There's a lot of people know an awful lot of things about dogs. I mean, you've got dogs. And it seems to me that it would be to us all good to take a little bit more of a look at it. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Is anybody else this morning that would like to speak concerning an agenda, consent agenda item? Okay, I'll close public comment on consent agenda items. And before we do, I just want to make sure, surely we have in our contract that you got the deductive direct purchase from the contract.
Commissioner.
I mean, I almost hate to ask something like that because, but if there is not in there, then it needs to be in there. But does everybody just understands that you do direct purchases, and you not only get the consent agenda, I mean, not only do you get the cost of the direct purchase off, you also save on the sales tax on the thing too, because they didn't have to pay sales tax. Both those come off the price.
Yeah, yes, sir. I think that there's a little bit of confusion in that this is a design-build contract, which is not something the public is used to seeing. They're used to seeing, we're gonna build a box that's this tall by this wide with this many screws and this many nails, and it's gonna be colored pink. In a design build, it's not what the end goal is. The end goal is to have a conceptual idea of what you're going to engage in. This is day one of the contract. So there is no hard design. The contract requires all local, state, and federal laws to be complied with, which would include the building code and fire code and any other particular code. The list of equipment there that we will direct purchase, that's not an exclusive list. We will add to as we find opportunities to save sales tax. The process that goes through, we've already identified those through our discussions and negotiations as major points, where seven percent on those items is substantial. The process that it will take, we're gonna sign on day one the contract with the design-build firm, when he gets ready, or they get ready, to execute a purchase for the barn structure. They will come to us. There will be a deductive change order to the contractor. There will be a PO cut for a direct purchase minus or net the sales tax to the provider or the vendor that's gonna provide it. In this particular contract, those items, he's telling you, already have the sales tax deducted. So in a normal cycle, we would see a seven percent savings. On those particular items, it's gonna be a dollar-for-dollar offset. Now, if we identify other items, let's say we can buy the HVAC, there would be a deductive change order with a net yield savings, because that's not specifically listed in that list of equipment that we've already identified and netted out the sales tax for.
So basically, this is the maximum amount that this contract would be, and that it's gonna go into design, and the future design before construction will be approved, but will be approved, and then they'll move forward.
You're gonna see the design, yes, sir, after the engineer stamp and seal it and all of that. And then the design-build contract is one-inclusive, so he, that same firm will then move into the construction portion of the contract, as a design-build firm does.
Tim, I don't usually allow it because it sets bad precedent, but please try to make it quick.
All I'm suggesting is, what you have there is a contract that's enforceable. Everything, I understand that process, and it's a great process. My point was, there's nowhere that says the money that's taken out of the county to buy these materials comes off of the contract. Everything she said, and the things that she said are not in the contract. Some of them need to be in the contract.
Thank you. I'll ask the, our attorney to take a look at it and see if we're adequately protected in his opinion. Thank you. The, no more comment on agenda items, so we'll, I'll ask, does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Commissioner Adams, act?
A and L.
A and L. Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Those were my items, so I have nothing else, sir.
Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
J. And B. I apologize, B as well.
B, okay. Okay, and I have no additional.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda items C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and K.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll start with consent agenda item A. Commissioner Adams, act.
Yeah, I will be opposed to this item. Basically, I still don't feel that the design met the criteria that we laid out. I don't believe, I think it's overpriced for what was presented to us as well. It's a few metal buildings with some dividers and things. I just, I don't, I can't make the numbers add up in my head with what some other communities are building some buildings for, and other things. I understand, Steph, you did, you negotiate what you can with who applied. So I appreciate that, but I just can't keep behind it at its current costs for what we're getting.
Okay. Anybody else have, yes, Commissioner?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The reason I wanted to pull item A was simply this. Thank God, it's finally getting here. It's been a long time coming. It's needed. I wish we did not have to be in the animal services business. I wish people took personal responsibility of their animals. But we have, we don't have to, but we choose to. But I do want to say our employees out there deserve a facility. The animals deserve a facility, and I believe we're gonna see a lot more volunteers come to the table and be a part in a new facility. So I say that to say this. I've been, I've had a few dirtworks contractors, if you will, and I'd probably blot the name on that, who want to donate their time and services on helping getting the land straightened out for that. I'd be willing to cook. They asked if they'd be willing to, if they came, if they could, the county could pay diesel fuel for their, for their equipment. So I think it would be great to have a volunteer day out there and see what we can possibly get done, if we could. I know we were gonna use public works, but that does take them away from other jobs. But if we can get volunteers that are proficient in that, that business, then I'd be willing to do whatever we want and cook hamburgers, hot dogs, brisket, you know, turkey, whatever. We could do all kinds of good things and get this project finally moving out of the ground. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think that's wonderful that they'd make that, to volunteer for that, and I think that we can certainly get together and try to do something like that. It wouldn't be unprecedented as a first time. We're having training days on other, on other projects in the county that we're trying to knock out two birds with one stone, so this would be a really good thing. And yes, sir, if you, if you would kind of head that up with JR and get together, and that would be wonderful in my book. And thank you for whoever's helping. Commissioner Wilkinson, do you have some comments?
I do, thank you. A couple of things. First, thank you, Julianne, and your team for getting this to this point. I do, I'm glad to see that we're moving this along and that it's not sitting anymore. A couple of questions I have, I know on the, on the consulting services agreement, in the first paragraph, we refer to the county as the county, and then the consultant, but then throughout the contract, we refer to design builder. Should we be changing that too? And I know I'm getting a little into the weeds, but it is a concern that I have. Should that be consultant throughout instead of design builder, or do we need to name design builder, builder?
We can, or we can just include, just change them to one or the other to be consistent.
Okay. I just think that needs to be cleaned up a little bit. And then on the kennel buildings, we didn't mention dimensions. Is there a reason why we didn't mention dimensions?
I don't think the final design's been done yet. I mean, they basically gave us a basic design of what they're gonna try to do, but then the final design has to come from the designer, and the designer can't be paid until they get their contract. So it would go from where it is now, which is a conceptual design, to a final design, which would then come back to us for approval before it moved forward, if I'm understanding the procedure.
Yeah, and when he made his presentation, he gave you a minimum number of kennels that are gonna be guaranteed. But as we have currently and will need out there, we're working with staff to determine. There are various sizes. So there are some of our larger kennels where we house animals that may come from, where they're bonded together, and they're, they're now homeless. And so we need a spot for, to house three animals in one cage. And our smaller dogs obviously need less room. So there is a small variation in each kennel size, or the set of kennel sizes that you're gonna have, and that is yet to be determined in final design and layout and how we massage them, so that it's most efficient for cleaning and feeding and care of the animals.
Right. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for public purposes. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. Okay, passed four to one, excuse me. And we're gonna move to item B. Commissioner Wilkinson?
Julianne, I would just like for you to, I mean, I can read, obviously, but I'd like for you to be able to explain why we're doing what we're doing to the public, please.
Yes, ma'am. So our SHIP, or Affordable Housing, AHAC Committee, received notice from Florida Housing Finance that basically allowed for $100,000 extra set of funds, which was very stipulated in its use and eligibility. It had to be, it was, it came after the recent hurricanes that we had, and was predominantly targeted at our South Florida communities. However, if you participate in the program anywhere in Florida, you got a prorated portion of it as eligibility. We reviewed the program guidelines with the Affordable Housing Committee, your Citizens Committee, that is charged with the administration of SHIP. And the program requirements are very stringent. You have to have the ability to prove it was solely damaged at the, at Hurricane Ian's destruction. You have to prove that they did not have another source of grant funding or recovery funds that they were already eligible for, and the already, of course, very stringent SHIP eligibility criteria that we have. If you chose to participate, you had to put your other programs on hold and/or declare them disaster as well, and that would have prohibited everyone that's currently in the program process, in the rehabilitation progress, of their project being done until we were able to expend these funds. In reviewing all of that, we had a very long meeting with AHAC. They unanimously recommended that we did not see the return on tabling our other projects and searching for people who may have eligibility for this particular. So the recommendation before you is from AHAC with support of staff, simply to let Florida Housing know, Putnam County did not sustain enough damage for these funds to be utilized well here, and they can reallocate them to our South Florida friends who may need it. Putnam County did not sustain enough damage for these funds to be utilized well here, and they can reallocate them to our South Florida friends who may need it.
I agree, thank you for that explanation, that's all I needed.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to that, um, the AHAC committee, um, just a few years ago, was just meeting, uh, when they had to, okay? And the company we were using to help us administer those funds was not doing a very good job, so we, they switched over to Guardian. And probably the biggest thing on this one, we, we really didn't want to, and this came from the board as a recommendation, um, and I am chair of that board, is that we didn't wanna put our projects that we currently have in the pipeline that are moving forward and we're gaining, um, you know, ground to try to get back in compliance and everything, to put those on hold to try to concentrate on this. So we hate to give money back, but as Jay Tilton said, the juice just wasn't worth the squeeze on this one. So, and I hate to put it that way, but it was unanimous with, with that board, so, but I appreciate you asking that question.
I have one other question for you, um, since we can't discuss this any other time. Are we gonna be in the, and this isn't particular to that, but just to, um, to your committee, are we gonna be taking funds in the future for down payment assistance for houses?
We're gonna discuss that, we actually have a meeting tomorrow.
Yes sir.
Um, at ten o'clock, and that is one of the things, cause the monies that we'll receive and this next pool of money is a lot larger than we've ever received. Usually it's been around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and when you do a forty thousand dollar renovation, they don't go very far. Uh, and a forty thousand dollar renovation doesn't go very far. So we are definitely gonna, uh, discuss at looking at down payment assistance and getting that plan together.
I think that would be really great, is that for the hometown for heroes program, or is that just a separate program, or do you know?
It's separate, yeah, and so I think we, and I think we would be able to, to administer these funds a lot quicker. And they make a little difference, cause the home renovations, they are needed and you have to still have a percentage of those in your, in your plan, but it's cumbersome. We, we just now found two more contracts, we've been working with one contract for the last couple of years, and now we have three to try to get these projects done.
Good.
Uh, so the down payment assistance, I believe, will, will make it a lot easier to be able to stay current and administer these funds and make it, make a bigger difference.
Good, I'd like to see that happen, thank you.
I totally agree with that, I mean, down pa, down payment assistance is a way to change someone's life.
Yes.
Um, I'm not saying that helping someone remodel their home when they can't afford it isn't life-changing either, but usually down payment assistance in most instances are for young people that are first time buyers that in no way in the world they could ever make that happen without that assistance. So I would also be a huge advocate of doing as much down payment assistance as we possibly could. I think that's a great way to try to spend funds. Uh, someone that needs their home remodeled, I don't wanna minimize that, but by the same token, they still have a home to remodel. The other way, the other people don't have a home to remodel, so, um, I would be a big advocate of that. So, uh, could I have a motion to approve item B?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval item B.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Uh, we're gonna move down to item J. Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yeah, the only reason I bring this up is, there's a huge difference between these bids, and I know we send them out and you get what you get. Do we have any concerns, I mean, this is a...
We had concern when, when it first started, we had some pretty good concern, but the contractor was checked out, he checks out in other areas. He was given the opportunity to claim scrivener error, which he did not claim, like he had made a mistake or something. And so, he's been checked out and he seems to think that he can build this project for that amount of money. So, and I don't see a red flag, I've talked to Jay about it, I've talked to administration about it. I do this for a living outside, so I kinda did my best to find out or shoot holes in it if I could. I can't find any, I mean...
Okay.
So, I mean, this is not unusual, I know like on Ravine Garden State Park, when they uh, redid the ravines, there was a six hundred thousand dollars difference between the low bid and the one above it. On this, on this complex right here, there was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars difference between the two prices. So it happens from time to time. Uh, when the uh, when the college over in St. John's County built the um, built the uh, the police uh, place where they trained police officers, the, and uh, and in the health services building, the new building they did over there, there was like seven million dollars difference between the two in the low bid, and they got all those projects completed for that amount of money. So, just because they're low doesn't necessarily mean that they didn't want it bad enough to move forward. So, Jay's not been able to find any holes in it, I have and administration hasn't, uh, we have discussed it, I think that we need to move forward.
Yeah, I don't disagree, I just wanted to have the discussion, thank you.
Commissioner Harvey, did you have something?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Commissioner Wilkinson, I, I agree. When I first started in this business, these things would just drive me insane. But what I've learned is, if we do our due diligence, what we do, some of these companies maybe wanna make extra profit, number one. Some don't wanna do it at all, so they just throw a number out there. And it's concerning, because it looks like everything is off. But again, I think our staff has done due diligence to find it, it's just part of this business and it's, it's, I wish everybody would not do that, cause it makes it look kind of silly on their part, but I can't control their business practice, so.
Well, you know, there's another item of this that, that because we're forcing, or not forcing, but that, but, but part of this contract is that these people have to come up with a performance and payment bond. And I'm telling you straight up, when they come in at quite a bit lower than the next person in line, their bond company makes them, prove to them that they didn't make a scrivener error, that they didn't do something, or the bond company won't write a bond on it. So, if they're gonna, if they're able to give us a performance and payment bond, which I feel after talking to them, they're gonna be able, talking to Jay, they're gonna be able to. I haven't talked to the contractor direct, I don't think that would be appropriate. But the um, the bonding company is another level, when they furnish us that performance and payment bond, that means that he's had to at least give the bonding company a, a reason that he's indifferent and, and some kind of assurance to the bond company, cause if he goes out of business in the middle of this, they got to pony up the money to finish the project.
Right.
So, th- there's another level of scrutiny in here that's coming from that bond too. So, anyhow, hopefully it'll work out, I mean, there's no way of promising or anything at this point, but I'm comfortable enough with it after talking to Jay and talking to staff that I think we're gonna have to move forward.
All right, very good.
Will you give us a motion to approve?
Yes sir, motion to approve item J, um, bid award twenty-three eighteen, Putnam County sanitation office building project, three hundred ninety-seven thousand.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Uh, the last one is item L, uh, Commissioner Adams Act.
I pulled this one in basically just to acknowledge the service of West Putnam Volunteer Fire Department over decades and long before I was alive, long before I've lived here. The group of people that's been out there since I've been out there has, has worked diligently and very hard to keep their volunteer service as best as they could. Basically, our community out there, it's, this is where I live, this is the, the station that's closest to me, has grown older in average age, I guess is the best way to put it, as the whole county has, but our particular community has, has exponentially done that. Um, even for my church, we did an assessment of the number of people that are eighteen and under, and there's only eighty-two people within two miles of our church, which is only a mile from, from this facility. I had, I just wanna make sure the public understands too, this is something the volunteer fire department wanted, they came to us with it. I very, I'm, I'm, I'm close with these people, I, I talked to them about it, I made sure that was the case. They did everything they could with the community, having community meetings to see if they can generate more interest in the community, and their interest is there from a financial perspective, we just don't have the young volunteers that you would need to actually run a, a full-fledged volunteer fire department. I think this is gonna be a, a net benefit for that community, not cause the volunteer fire people weren't doing a great job, just because it allows a, a transition that is viable, visible, and long-term to occur. And I guess my only question, JR, for this is, if it, another group decided they wanted to volunteer there, whether it was to help with the grounds or things like that, they still could have a volunteer department in that area that could assist, is that correct? Even though it's, if the county took over the building?
Yes sir, and I, when I went to, actually went to the board meeting, uh, with the board, that was one of the questions that was asked, cause they still had like three or four people there that still wanted to volunteer, I think what has happened is the, the board has decided that they can't get interest in anybody taking over their board.
Right.
And they can't really find anybody interested in running the fire department, so they asked that we would step in and help. Um, so absolutely, um, I mean, I think this is the same case as what we did in San Mateo a couple of years back, is we took in the fire department, there's still a handful of volunteers that run out of San Mateo every day. We did not put career staffing in San Mateo. The fire departments are vital to our operation, we have to have them. Um, so whether it's volunteers today, career tomorrow, we, it's way too early in this game to tell. There may be when the administration flushes out that building, you may get another handful of volunteers that step up and says, we wanna do this, and, and we'll absolutely do everything we can do to support them, but this is the stuff we gotta do for our future. It's required by the ISO that we went through back in September of last year, that we have a fire station every five miles, road miles. Um, and that's difficult to do if we don't protect and take care of the buildings that we currently already have. So, that's why I was in a little bit of a fear of letting a fire department go beyond us, was because we're going to have to have them moving into the future. And when they, when um, the board and their fire department administration approached us and asked the county to come in and help, as we do in most cases, we try to oblige as much as we can. So I went out and met with them, um, every one of their board members was present at the, at the meeting. So, at that point, we had no fear whatsoever that this is what the direction of the department wanted to go, their chief was there. Um, I reached out to, to Mr. Commando and the, and the legal staff and asked what we needed to do for our due diligence, and we did a, a, a background title search just to make sure that the county wasn't stepping into something that we had unknown of. So that title search came back, um, they seemed in a little bit of a, uh, in a time constraint for the department, cause I think they have an insurance bill that's due like the first part of August. That's kinda why we, I, it was kind of a late addendum into the thing, is we were waiting on the clear title search to come back, and um, they really don't think, wanted, I mean, we've all experienced a double rate of insurance cost. Um, I don't think that they wanted to be able to forfeit that if we were moving forward as of Oc, uh, August one.
And I, and I don't know if the rest of the board members, and obviously you weren't here, but when JR presented us the, the five mile circles in one of the presentations a long time ago, this has almost no overlap with other departments. So this really would be a full hole if we didn't, if we didn't do something, so. Um, I guess my only question is to Rich is, my involvement with that community does not affect the way I'll vote, but um, I just wanna make sure, do I have to declare, cause I, I did meet with Frank Chanel and I did meet with everyone on that board as well. Um, so what, what should I declare this, the?
Are you, are you gaining any monetary?
No, no, but I, I just wanna make sure everyone knows that I, I'm heavily vested in this.
There's nothing wrong with disclosing, but you don't have a personal interest and this isn't quasi-trudicial, so you're making a decision whether or not to.
Yeah, my only personal interest is if my house starts on fire, I want a fire department out there, so.
Listen, we all want that.
But, uh, okay, I just wanted to make sure I said that, and that, that this, it's been a great group of people, both leaders that have been there since I've been there, and I appreciate everything that that volunteer fire department's done over the years.
Commissioner Harvey, did you have something to add?
I do, thank you, Ms. Chairman, I was gonna pull this item for roughly the same concerns, but I got a few more. Um, I would do wanna thank long dead and gone V. Yarrington, who started this fire department, and Willie Mae Williams lives right next door to us as of a year ago. They really spent a lot of time getting this department up and running. My concern was a hot July fourth, when I was approached about taking over this, and, and I'm glad, JR, that you expressed the concerns you did publicly, because rumor mill was that we were ta, forcing the volunteers out and all that. And I, you know, some of our good intentions, people don't understand that. And I told you yesterday, I was gonna bring this up, because I want the public to understand that they came to us. They came to us and said that, and I don't believe this is gonna be the last one that's gonna come to us. I don't, have, we got seventeen around the county, or fifteen different ones?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. As volunteers go, go kinda dwindle down, and we see that in our, in a lot of organizations, our churches and our civic clubs, you know, forty years ago, when I moved in Locken and married Linda, service clubs and volunteer fire departments were huge. I mean, it was hundreds of people that were there, and now, like you said, if you can get five or six and, and they can't even run calls in some cases, because they're just not equipped to anymore, they, they don't have the energy and they're old, and I get all that. So I just really wanted the public to know, we're not forcing anyone out. They came to us and asked us this, and um, I do think us going forward as a board, or some board in the future, is going to have to deal with, how do we bring these other buildings on if they come available? And that's gonna be a big thing, we do need the buildings, we need it. Uh, but when we bring them on, there's gonna be an expectation of service.
Yep.
That's gonna have to be dealt with, and just saying, okay, we, we're gonna try to have volunteers there might not be an appropriate expectation. So we're gonna have to look at that, that's not for today's conversation, but I just wanted to bring that out, that, you know, in the future, I'm sure you have a plan, I'm sure you've thought about this, I'm sure you've looked at all the scenarios as our public safety director. I know you have a lot more on your plate than just that, but those are concerns that I do have. And, you know, I always say this, when I first got appointed, Don Hershey, who was our supervisor of elections, said, be careful of people who wanna donate things to you, you know, and you've assured me that the building was up to date. It's pretty much move in, done, um, and we can do certain things there, so I'm good with that. But even if it wasn't, we would still have to bring those buildings up to, to some kind of standard at that point. So I appreciate all your hard work on that. Ms. Chairman, that's the end of my comments.
Yeah, I think that uh, I think that we need to keep in mind, it's like Commissioner Adams Act said, it's the location of this particular fire department in the, the relativity to where all, where it is combined with other fire departments in the county. I think that if we don't have it, that it is gonna really hurt our ISO, future ISO ratings that we are working on and gonna have an announcement before too long, a very positive announcement, it sounds like, for a county ISO that's in the final stages of it. And so, I'm not gonna ruin JR's thunder, but it's in the not-too-distant future, and, but we've got to do this.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I just say a quick something, just for the general public knowledge? Um, I know we did our ISO in September of last year, and it seems like it's been forever, okay? Um, and some of the rules that ISO has put on, and it's, and it comes back to the individual fire departments, you had to have five people from the home department, so like in Station twenties, for instance, in order for them to even become anything other than a ISO class ten, you had to have five people from that home department, which is sometimes difficult. Um, so we, we went through and did a consolidation to do a countywide rating from all, all quadrants of the county to bring it underneath one rating. It's taken so long is because we've had, they've had to go back through and change all those jurisdictional boundaries and to put them underneath one. So all the mapping has to been changed and all that kinda stuff, so I just wanted the general public and the, the board to know, that, that the number's coming soon. However, it's gonna take a little more time, because they're having to do this great consolidation, um, which works out best for both of us. Um, I talked to one of the commissioners sitting on the board, um, now they're wanting to do insurance ratings every three years. And with eighteen individual volunteer fire departments, means it takes about, you had to do six of those a year to stay up above board. And it takes about six months each from your staff to do those. So it, from a, but staffing perspective, it'd have been a nightmare to try to conduct six of these in one year. So the consolidation, even though it's taking a little longer to get the number, is gonna be well worth it in the future. So, um, that, that's all I had, thank you so much.
Mr. Adams Act, do you have something else?
I just wanna make sure the public understands if, I didn't have a hundred percent confidence that the chief, the president, and that whole board wanted to do this and it was their idea, I would be standing on this desk yelling and screaming that we cannot do this and that it's absurd and crazy. They, they absolutely wanna do this, they, they can no longer do it, um, and it just, I just wanna reiterate that in lieu of what Mr. Harvey's saying. It, it absolutely is what they wanna do, if I felt that there was even an inkling that the county was just trying to take it, I would be objecting and I'd probably bring myself to cursing, so, thank you.
Mr. Harvey, did you have something else to add?
I do, it's not in lieu of what, uh, the point I was trying to make was basically, um, rumor mill was going on, and I was trying to head that off. I'm glad that they came and they, they needed help and we were able to help them. And I'm glad, and we're gonna see more of that, and I'm sure of that. And those fire departments were put in strategic locations, some of them, not all of them, cover those five mile circles. Um, but we still have areas, and Star Lake being one of them, that's probably not inside any circle out there, even with our new fire department that's proposed in the West End. So, there's a lot of good changes, I think, coming on, and I do believe we're gonna see more. So there's a lot of good changes, I think, coming on, and I do believe we're going to see more. But we adamantly need our volunteers to work with our paid staff, and we know that. But as time goes on, not everybody, I had a young man at Vacation Bible School yesterday. He said, I want to be a volunteer fireman. And I was like, wow, you know, but he's a young man. And I said, I'll get you hooked up with the right people, you know? But whether that continues, you don't hear it like you used to, and you don't. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Cheryl, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item L.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have a motion carries unanimously. I'm going to move the new business today down, further down the list. And we're going to go into code enforcement now, if y'all are ready, where they don't have to sit in here for the budget discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm Chris Capolo, filling in for Tom Moore. All right, our first one is 2006-01398. Address is 112 Augusta Avenue, Satsuma. Property owner's name is Taron Gudeel. Violation is permits required for enclosed carport. The original amount was $147,462. Total cost of enforcement action is $3,148. The property owner has recently purchased the property. Property is now compliant and the owner is requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend reduced fines be paid within ninety days.
Okay, thank you, let me start with this one a little bit. So someone didn't pull a permit to enclose their carport. And I understand this isn't you, this was way before you were even here.
Yes, sir.
And they ended up getting a fine from Putnam County for $147,462, because they didn't pull their permit? And, and we're going to reduce it to $3,148 out of the goodness of our heart, because he came into compliance and went on and pulled his permit?
Correct, I believe, I'm not sure of the case, but I think it was, the property owner had sold the property, but it was on his son's name, but he never really transferred the property over. It was really his son's problem. And he realizes it was under his name the whole time, so he fixed it.
Went and pulled his permit?
Yes.
So we're going to charge him now $3,148, because he went and pulled his permit? Okay, would any of the other Commissioners like to comment before I hand the chair over to Mr. Harvey to make this motion?
I think this one is one of those ones, it's an exception to me.
Amen, brother, there you go.
I, I think we actually should probably waive everything in this particular case. I make a motion that, for case 2006-01398, that we waive all fees and fines to zero.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing, before I, before we vote on this, I just want everybody to understand at home and wherever, the difference here is, is not that there was a, a serious code violation for safety issues. It was that he didn't pull a perm, this owner didn't pull a permit, and it ended up getting way out of hand. That's the difference between when they have a bona fide codes case that gets a fine, they bring it into compliance and we reduce the fine. In my book, that's the big difference between the two. So if there's no more.
Can I ask a kind of a question? I guess bringing in compliance that it met all the county standards, that if they pulled this and billed it?
Yes, sir, he pulled all the permits, they were inspected and final.
All right, I'm good.
I just have a question, so at what point, I mean, can we just, these numbers just can roll on and roll on forever as far as violations? I mean, as far as the fine, I mean, you have a house, I don't know what this house is worth, but let's just say it's fifty thousand. And we, we just continue to add and add? I mean, shouldn't there be some kind of cap that you can't, you can't find more than what the house is worth or something? This is all in statute, I guess, right?
It is, and it's not based on the value of the house, it's twenty years.
Well, it just doesn't make sense.
Well, you, you're, you're absolutely correct, and a few.
Not picking on you, Rich, but it just doesn't make sense.
A few years ago, there were multiple cases such as this. And since Thomas has been here, and them, they're, they're really working hard to try to root out these type of cases and get them dealt with. There used to be, in Thomas's office when he got here, there was a shelf, two shelves there on a full bookcase that were these type cases, wall to wall, file to file, from one end of the bookshelf to the other. They're getting there. So I'm commending Thomas and, and his, and his employees from helping, from getting this down to a manageable number. But it, you know, I, I have to apologize, because these kind of things still just aggravate the fire out of me to no end. It shouldn't have never happened. But they're trying to, to do something about them now, and so they're really diligently trying. So I think all we can do at this point is support them the best we can and move forward. Commissioner Harvey, did you have something?
I did, I feel the same way as everybody else up here has expressed. I guess my big concern is, you know, again, Commissioner Turner was headed down that road, but this is a codes case from 2006. And now we're saying, the building, all the permits and everything are copacetic, because it's 2023, and nothing's changed since 2006? I mean, I would have rather sent him a letter in 2006, say, just pay your permit and be done with this thing. You know, instead of racking up, because I know building codes have had to change. So you can't tell me that, what, but I don't care about that today. Care about doing the right thing here, but.
But Commissioner, you understand the processes, we did do that, and then they ignored it, that's how the.
I, I get that. Somebody ignored it, I get it.
Yeah.
I get it, somebody ignored it, somebody said, I don't care. And a lot, there are people out there that just go, what are they going to do? Find me and I'll just, I'm dying anyway, or I'll be dead, I don't care what they do to me. And I hear that sometimes, but.
Or they're renters and they don't ever tell the landlord it even happened in the first place. He finds out down the road somewhere, a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars later, that he needs to pull a permit.
Yeah, you're right.
Anyhow, if there's no more comments, Cheryl, entertain a motion. I will call for a question on this one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have a motion carries unanimously. We're going to go to zero on that one. Your next case?
Next case is 2008-01138 for 709 Usina Avenue in Interlockin. Property owner's name is Extra Space Homes LLC. The violation was care premises in Salvage Yard. The original amount was $126,427.50. There was a tax deed surplus check received for $6,609. Amount still owed is $119,818.41. The total cost of enforcement action is $2,731. The property owner has recently purchased the property, the property is now compliant, and the owner is requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Any questions of staff at this time? Cheryl, is there anybody?
On this one, the, the surplus check already reduced it by more than what our cost was.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's sixty-six hundred, reduced it from one twenty-six thousand, four, four twenty-seven, minus six hundred, our, our total is two thousand seven hundred and thirty-one. I think with that, this falls under that same thing, that, that obligation that we normally would hold people to, the two thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars is already met.
Yeah, I think Matt can, can, we had the same thing happen last.
Same thing happened last time.
I think Matt can answer that for us, if he would.
If the board wants to, to take the same path that they did last time, and, and just reduce it to what your hard cost was, we can take the surplus and then determine who the previous owner is that that should be going to.
So they'll just deduct it out of the monies that's already been done at the clerk's office? So if the motion were to be that we, that we say that the, the fines have been reduced twenty-seven thirty-one, which are hard costs, then the honorable rentals will go, then go down and pay that money back to Putnam County, before he gives the rest of the money back to who it really belongs to. Is that a motion?
And you said it would go, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, it would go back to the previous owner, not the current owner?
Well, it, it depends, it's, it's interpleater action, and, and we have an attorney that has to go through that to determine who is, because sometimes there can be multiple person's ownerships in a property, and so we have to go through a legal process to determine where those excess funds go.
We have a claim, just like we have a claim, there's oftentimes many people that have claims. So clerk's office goes through a process where they determine in a priority basis, and sometimes a percentage basis, who's entitled to the remainder of that claim.
Okay.
I think we discussed this at the last meeting, and basically, I think we had the discussion, or at least teetered on the edges of the discussion, do we just go ahead and take all the tax deed surplus? And I'm against that, and the reason why is I don't think that we should handle that any different than anybody else that comes in here that we have normally handled these cases on. And then it's up to the clerk and their process to decide who gets the surplus through their legal process.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Case 2008-01138, the Board of County Commissioners accept $2,731. Pay within ninety days of what's already on file.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have a motion carries unanimously. Uh, Matt, do you have our check ready for us?
Yes, sir, and like I, like I said last time, we didn't know last time, but the check was already, already in the bank, so we're good.
I figured that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we're going to go on to appointments. And then I'll move back up to new business. To start with today on appointments, they've asked us to go ahead and look at the value adjustment board. Usually, in the past, the last several years, it's been the chairman of the board, the vice chairman of the board, and we need to appoint an at-large, which is, has been the last year or so, it's been Ms. Julie Masters. And I'd like to nominate her to be back on it again this coming year, and that will require a board vote. It doesn't require a second, but it requires a board vote. So all in favor of Ms. Julie Masters?
Aye.
Opposed, okay, Ms. Julie Masters has been appointed to the value adjustment board. Could we, do we need to do them by motion or just by, it seemed like last year we just did it by wave, that, that basically we agreed that the chairman and the vice chairman would be the two members of the commission for the value adjustment board. Is that good enough again? Okay, does anybody have a problem with just doing the chair and vice chair? Okay.
I'm good.
We'll, then that's what we'll do this year, chairman and vice chairman, myself and Commissioner Harvey. Also, do we, does the commission want to look at just making that, that it would be the, the, automatically be the chairman and vice chairman that serve on that every year? Or do you want to bring it to the board every year for this discussion? It's up to you.
I don't know why we can't just bring it to the board, I mean, it just takes two minutes.
I'm good, I'm good, I'm good. Just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. Okay, so, all right, so that's what we'll do. It'll be myself and Commissioner Harvey. And I'd like to, on the green belt advisory board, I'd like to nominate Larry Korn to serve back on there. Like I said, I don't need a second, but I need a vote, because it's an at-large position, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have a motion carries. I'd also like to appoint Chance Clay as District Three Representative to the Green Belt Advisory Board. And so that doesn't require a vote. And with that, I'm going to move to the next, which is Commissioner Adams Act. Do you have any appointees today? Commissioner Harvey?
I have none.
Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Fair, fair authority, Vicki Miles. And then I still have a vacancy for animal services. So anybody who's interested in that district too, come see me and I'll see what we can do.
Okay. I've been working on my fair authority appointment, but I haven't quite got there yet, so. Okay, that'll do that. Before we go into a public comment on miscellaneous items, I'm going to start on new business, move back up to item 8A. We had this conversation. We had this conversation last time around, and basically we were talking about reducing to possibly reducing down to nine point two percent. But, so since that time, I went and sat down with Ms. Young, and, and we came up with a, a list, and this, this list that is handwritten in my handwriting, that we went down the list of things that we have no control over that have increased this year. And so there's a certain amount of money that's got to be, that's got to be done. And also during this, that we've got to have in addition too. But also during this time, we had a taxpayer that changed the methodology on their, help me out if I say something wrong, Julie, and changed their methodology on their tangible taxes. And it turned out that we, the county ended up getting three million dollars additional revenues that we didn't know about two weeks ago. So I went and sat down with Ms. Young, and we ran multiple scenarios here of different things. And so if you have these two, there's two pages here. One of them is, I guess, two forty-five of your agenda, and then one I brought to handout with different scenarios. And this calculator is also on if you want to change anything else, but we tried to come up with enough scenarios here. But if everybody looks originally, if we'd have not changed the, the millage rate at all, we'd have had a total new revenue of seven million, four thousand dollars. But now, because we got this additional money in there, we can, we could actually get down to the level that Commissioner Adams Act was talking about last time around at the eight point nine nine nine. And we'd still have, we'd still have six hundred and forty thousand more dollars than we would have, which will help cover some of the items that I have on my handwritten list here that we can't do a thing about. By the way, I have a copy of what we're talking about to go into the public record, it's laying right here. So you will have a copy of it for the public record. But it's basically things that we have nothing to say about, and we're, we're basically at two million, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars of the increased expenses that we have, that we've got to pay. Well, if you look at the, if you come down and you look at the eight point nine nine, we, we will have the money to do that, but in order to make this work, the board's going to have to commit to the B O C C side of this, and also the holdback enough to cover that two million, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. And on top of that, we've still got three other contracts, maybe four, that we have not, that we feel very confident that we're going to have increases on this year that have not, that we have not received yet. But that will still give us approximately six hundred thousand dollars above what we've dropped dead, got to have today, to, to cover those other ones. But that is also, is if the, the, we know for a fact, I don't know, you say it like that, we, we feel very certain, we don't know for a fact, but we feel very certain that there's going to be a health insurance prop up this year that's going to be necessary. Last year, we did it out of general reserves. This year, we feel confident, I guess is a better term, that we're going to have more than a million dollars on the, on the mid-year true-up when we get around to doing it. So with us having the million dollars, that would give us the million dollars that we can put in the health insurance program for the employees and shore that up again this year. We've also got a meeting tomorrow at one thirty that I. We've also got a meeting tomorrow at one thirty that I asked Chairman Davis to call and he has and that, that the sole reason for us being there is to try to come up with ways that we can, can not, can make the healthcare system move in a more sustainable direction than what it's been in the last couple of years and I think that the people, one thing, if it works out, is gonna help and that, but there's a lot of other little things too, such as, I don't know, um, if someone waits all day because they're sick and then they don't have a doctor or a clinic they can get to and they end up going to the emergency room and it's a three thousand dollar bill instead of a two hundred dollar bill at Saint John's Critical Care, whatever the case may be, we need to try and, and give them inns, incentives that it would be better to take a little time off during the day and go to that or, you know, there's just other incent, ways to incentivize it without dropping their healthcare or their, um, their ability to seek out healthcare, so that's what, the type of things that they're gonna be talking about tomorrow, I hope, is that, um, in the insurance committee meeting, is ways that we can help make the program sustainable. But with all that being said, I believe we can cover up, cover the million dollars for the health insurance out of the mid-year true-up reserves, uh, which is just general fund reserves, but it's, it'll be more reserves coming our way and with that being done and if the board will commit that the, that part of that twenty percent has got to go towards those expenses that are listed on this page, there's no other way to balance a budget, um, other than to do that, so that's what I want to bring up is what the commission wants to do. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, you know, what you were saying about the one million coming out of reserves, that's, that's not money that we're putting on the back of our employees, that's something we're taking right off the top and we're not giving it back to the employees, that's a good thing. The other question I have, on your handwritten notes, you have a tax collector of five hundred thousand, what would that be? You had a little question mark there and I don't.
Well.
Do we know what that might be?
Yes.
Are we allowed to talk about it right?
Yeah, we can, but I'm trying not to make this about me and Parker.
That's not Parker, that's.
No, sir, yes, sir, um, that is the collection fees that Ms. Myers' office gets.
Okay.
For collecting the revenues, um, we, it was determined this year that statute, the current interpretation of statute for which we're going to have some additional conversation on, is that this Board of County Commissioners is responsible for paying Ms. Myers' collection revenue on all revenues collected for the school board.
For school board?
That's what I said too, uh, but yes, sir, that's what the statute says, so we, um, did not, that was a foreign concept, it was not budgeted in its entirety to cover her fee this year and obviously will need to be increased to cover that fee for next year. The school board millage, um, is set to, to continue to go up, now we are still having some determination about a, the bond, that is a special, special category of funding, but the Board of County Commissioners, per state statute, is required to pay the tax collectors' commission on the revenues collected on the school board millage.
Who is paying the bill now?
We are.
No, who's paying the, for her to collect the school, who has been?
We are too, we are.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That'll be another day.
Yes, sir.
That, I mean, can't beat a dead horse, huh?
We're not pleased, but if the statute says we have to do it, we have to do it and what we're determining is that's, excuse me for thinking this was a different matter now that she's brought it up, but this is an item that we don't have a choice on, so it's basically an increase in our budget that we have to put in there, we don't have an option. Um, if it turns out that we, that we only need four hundred thousand instead of the five hundred, uh, which I don't think is gonna, I think it's gonna be five hundred, or if part of it can come out of commis, of, uh, of, uh, Ms. Myers' budget, I'm not real sure yet, I'm just not sure, but it's something that we've got to cover, so that's why it's in the two point nine.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, but every one of these items on this list are things that, uh, that Ms. Young came up with and that, that I've, we vetted back and forth, we tried not to overly, um, overly reserve anything, we just tried to make it as realistic as we could possibly make it at, with the information that we had at the time. Uh, Commissioner Adamsak, I think you were next.
So is our, our goal today to set the max millage rate, is that what we're trying to do?
Yes.
You, you, the, the request today is I have to have enough information to prepare a tentative budget and max millage agenda item for the next meeting, so it is not a final vote today, but I do need the board direction to tell me what your max millage is going to be so that at that next meeting in July, when we hold that first official budget meeting for the public, we are producing an agenda item that is consistent with what the board is gonna set as a max millage.
Yeah, so max millage, I'm, I'm fine with it because we can still just sit down. With the new numbers, I'm not fine with eight point nine 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 for a final budget, but I probably stand alone on that, that's fine. Um, so do we need a motion or anything? I, I, I think we should set the max at eight point nine nine.
I think we're supposed to do it by consensus like we did last time because we can't set the millage rate yet, is that correct? So basically, we have to have this discussion because there's no sense, we had talked about at the last meeting and the reason I brought it back to the board today was because at the last meeting, we had tentatively agreed to try to go for nine point two, but then the extra three million dollars in revenues from the ad, from the, uh, tangible, uh, recalculation, tangible tax recalculation was, uh, showed up and so that gave us the opportunity then to meet our, to meet our, um, our, what we needed to make our budget whole and be able to get under nine percent. So that's why I wanted to bring it back to the board for a possible reduction and we'll end up with more money than we would have if we hadn't reduced millage rate at all.
I'd like just to speak about the reason why I've stood where I have for the last couple of years and why I will for the rest of my life, but it, it goes beyond just my conservative standpoints, it's, my goal all along has been to get us below eight point five at some point in that, throughout my career and that, the reason why is because that gives us agility in the event that we have a hurricane that actually impacts us or some other natural disaster, let's say there's a huge forest fire that comes and envelops a town or something, that, that, those things are possible in the state of Florida, we've had forest fires on the verge of, of towns and things in the past, um, that gives us the agility that if we did have to react, it gives you more room, buffer room in the millage to be able to not just count on reserves, to be able to increase millage in that instance, which, you know, I've talked about before, there's, there's two instances in my opinion where you can raise millage during a time of war, where it impacts your community and the people are leaving and there is no jobs, there's no people filled the jobs, which hopefully that never happens, and then during a natural disaster of some sort, or a, a man-made disaster, right? We're, we're in a time of the world where people have concerns in that facet too, so, um, I'm trying to drive down to that as soon as possible, I think part of the reason why I position the fact that we don't need to carry as many reserves if we lower the millages for that exact reason, if we, if we had a millage of eight point five and we have that one point five mils of flexibility in the case of something dramatic happened, that basically gives us a lot of buffer room in the next fiscal year because we never get to react at the time of the, of the disaster, right? Um, there has been no disaster where we've gone past and used up all of our, our reserves, so that's never happened in the county and really hasn't happened very many places in the country. Um, it has happened a couple of times, um, in Michigan, but that's a whole nother thing, had to do with water. But, uh, that, that's where my overall thing, just so people, when I sit here and argue and, and try to say those things, it's, it's really, I think, what's best for the community and for the county and I just want to put that out there in a way that's a little bit different than I presented in the past to hopefully help my, because we can't speak about this outside of this meeting, to help my colleagues here understand as well where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Adamsak, I completely understand and I believe you and me, if I could, thought we could realistically meet our obligations and drop our millage rate down to eight point five, I'd hug your neck and get on the bandwagon with you, I'm telling you straight up, but I don't see how we can meet our obligations and drop our, with, after sitting down with Ms. Young, and that's why I brought this list to the board today, with, after sitting down with Ms. Young, I don't see how we can meet those obligations and pay our expenses and drop the, and drop our, um, millage rate lower than eight point nine 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 and at least we got under nine percent. I think we've got to work this out in a period of years, hopefully we'll have another good year next year and we can bring down the millage a little bit and do it in, in, um, sequences instead of all at once. Commissioner Wilkinson?
A couple of things, um, regarding the reserves, Commissioner Adamsak, I understand where you're coming from, but I do remember a time not too long ago, eight, ten years ago, when there was a huge concern in this county, that this, this county commission was gonna go bankrupt and it was, you know, and then, you know, we had changes in the commission and now we have money in reserves and I'm, I'm glad and thankful for that, um, you know, it would only take one major disaster for a couple of bridges to blow out and that, you know, we learned in Barden that that bridge was three and a half, four million dollars because we had to replace that during an emergency time versus planning and I would much rather, five million?
I think it was five.
Whatever it ended up, if you had two bridges blow out, that's ten million out of your reserves. So, and then you gotta wait on the state to reimburse you and then you've got other things happening, so we do have to keep money in reserve, um, to handle those kind of natural disasters and, uh, Commissioner Turner, if today's purpose is to, um, advertise our max millage rate, how much confidence do we have in this three, three extra million dollars that we're supposed to get? I mean, once we advertise.
A very, a very high level of confidence at this point.
Once we advertise the eight point nine nine, we can't go back up.
Well, we've got another two weeks before we have to advertise the max, the maximum millage, but two weeks ago, we talked about nine point two, but that was under a completely different set of circumstances, the new circumstances, we have three million additional revenue, ad valorem revenue that came in, um, I know that the property appraisers office has met with the taxpayer concerning this, uh, additional tangible tax valuation and they have agreed that it would remain through this year, is that correct, Julianne, or that's, that it would remain, so we have a fairly high level of confidence that this three million dollars will be there this year.
Okay, so at, at the eight point nine nine, what about our constitutional officers? Have we fully funded what they've, what, what are normal?
Every one of them will be getting what they, what they would have gotten at the nine, if we hadn't changed, reduced the millage rate, every one of them will be getting more money than what they would have got if we'd have left the millage rate alone to start with, you can see the differences between these two sheets, their original, originally what they would have got is on this sheet with no changes.
Mm-huh.
And the additional revenues come along, if you look right there, for instance, the sheriff's department, originally, they would have gotten two million nine hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars and on this one right here, they get three million two hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine sixty-nine, so they actually, that's very close, I don't think it's dollar for dollar, but it's within a few thousand of being what the very original request was that everybody made, that the sheriff's department made, so I'm telling you, it's within, it's so close that it's not funny and, um, the, they had made the, and I'm gator, if, if you need to stand up and talk, brother, because I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, you just come forward if you need to. Um, they had committed at, at one point to do everything they could to bring their request within what the millage percentage would have been at the nine point three four nine, but then there was a, when we decided to bring it to nine point two possibly, it, it dropped the ad valorem revenue and when it did, it cut them short a couple of hundred thousand or more and so we got an email from, um, sheriff's staff that said they don't think they could do that, but then the three million dollars showed up and so they get more money than what they were asked to try to meet with, uh, on the last obligation that they had agreed to do, so I think they're real close to their original ask within a few thousand dollars, I believe.
So you're pointing to this green column, but at the end of the column, it's a negative two million dollars.
No, that's the difference, if we didn't take any money away from them, it's not negative, that's basically, if you, if that's the full ad valorem revenue and then each one of those, if we drop the, the ad valorem revenues down, that's how much money we would not get that we're giving back to the public. So if you fund, if you fund the, if you do not decrease the millage rate, then you'll get another two million eighty-eight thousand sixty-eight dollars.
Okay.
Or you can take the two million eighty-eight thousand sixty-eight dollars and use that money to drop the millage rate to under nine percent and if you're not gonna do it on a year that you have this money show up, then you're never gonna do it at all. So, okay, I think next was Commissioner Wilkinson, you, are you done for now, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then Commissioner Pickens was next?
Um, Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Turner and myself were here seven years ago when we had to raise this millage rate, right? So, and it wasn't a pleasant experience, um, felt sick to my stomach and we had to use reserves, I'm pretty sure also, to balance the budget, we've been able to tick this thing down a couple of times in the last few years, okay? Um, nine point three, we wanted to get to nine point two, okay? And then we've got nine point one and eight point nine, now, let me state this the right way, I hope, is that, that we would be meeting our obligations at eight point nine, correct?
I feel confident we would with six hundred to seven hundred and thirty left over for additional obligations that we have that we don't know about today, but we feel with a high level of confidence that it's coming, other increases.
Okay, so, and I want to say that this is because I, I live this every day as a commissioner and, and the rest of you do too, are we actually meeting our obligations? We're meeting the dollar obligation, but are we meeting the needs of the citizens in some of our departments, okay? Um, last time we were talking about this and I agreed that we would go to the nine two, that we could always raise it, I don't want to raise it, I pay taxes too, just because we got elected, doesn't mean we quit paying taxes, okay? And I'd like to lower it, but I want to have the discussion of, of being here seven years and I know there's a difference between what you think you need and what you have to have to do business, okay? But I, I'm, I want to start the conversation of, and I, it has been clear, um, from Commissioner Turner, um, since day one to reduce millage rates, Commissioner Adamsak also, very vocal about it, Commissioner Harvey has never said anything about raising rates at all and I don't think I have either and Ms. Wilkinson is new, but I don't think she wants to either. So we're in the position that we weren't in a number of years ago.
Right.
And thank the Lord that property values are going up.
Right.
Um, because if they were going down, people would just be complaining about them going down, now they're just complaining about them going up, but I want mine to go up. If we can lower this after this and we're pretty sure that this money can, coming in, I'm worried about if it doesn't come in next year, if for some reason, that there's a different way to figure this and that extra three doesn't come, what will we be getting next year and what will we have to deal with? I wondered, I want to know the, I want, I want each commissioner's, um, opinion on this of, if we went to the nine one and worked that budget as to what we look like and if these monies definitely come in, we're looking good, that we can always lower it, that's the option that we have, so I just wanted to have that conversation since we're having conversations here, so.
I appreciate the conversation, Commissioner, but I feel like having found three million dollars that we're giving back two million of it when we were gonna give back originally, last time around, we were talking about giving hun, six hundred and fifty thousand back before we, we found the other three million dollars at the nine point two. Now we found the three million dollars of additional ad valorem revenue came in and now we're gonna give back two million dollars, if we go to eight point nine nine, we'll give back two million dollars instead of the six hundred and fifty thousand, but we're actually getting three million more dollars, so we're getting a million more in the overall budget. Our part of it isn't through the three million dollars, it's spread out amongst the constitutionals at their percentages, so everybody gets a little piece of the pie because of what we did on the percentages two years ago, they, they, everybody participates, whether it goes up or goes down. They, everybody participates, whether it goes up or goes down, everybody participates in it. So, do, I, I feel like, my biggest concern is, is that we don't have reoccurring expenses that we're putting in, that we're using reserves to cover reoccurring expenses. I feel that there's no way of knowing, and I don't have a crystal ball, but there's no way of knowing that things will go up and down. But I feel confident that the prices of real estate aren't gonna go down at such a rate between this budget year and next budget year, that we're not gonna at least get the same amount of money. So, if we use these for recurring expenses, these are mostly recurring expenses. That's why they've got to be budgeted. So, but once we include those in the budget by using the numbers we have, then next year, we should have at least the same amount of money. I feel easy to say, we would have at least the same amount of revenue coming in as we do this year. And so, especially with, we've got several projects around that are online. Next year, GP will be on the, the 80% give back instead of the 95 like it is now. So, they will get more additional revenues from them. So, instead of the, the 603,000 in additional revenues that we would get at 8.9999, the, we, we would actually get more money from GP, I think, next year, right, Julianne?
No, sir.
Okay, this, this is the third year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so in the next budget year, not the one we're talking about now, in the next budget year, we'll get 20%, correct?
No, sir, you just completed the third year at 95%. What you have in front of you is the 80% that you will have for the next two years. There will be no increase from this year to next.
Okay, well, that's good enough. My whole point being here is, I feel like that there, I think this is a very conservative budget, especially after finding the other 3 million dollars. Because we're actually getting more money than we were gonna get in this line on this page. Bill, you find this page, it's in your packet?
Yes.
If you look on that line item right there, originally, we were gonna get this amount of money with no tax decrease at all. And now, if you look all the way over on the green column at the other end, we're gonna get that amount of money and be able to do a tax. So, we're actually getting more money than what we were gonna originally get. And be able to reduce millage rate to less than 9%.
Okay, all right, the property appraisers budget is, is gonna come over his percentage, okay?
Yep.
So, would this percentage lower and it's gotta come more over that? That one, we don't have a lot of say so, so where's that money come from?
It would come out of the 6 to 740,000 that's left over after we pay these expenses. Out of the 35 and the 20%, we would have about, I think it's a little over 700,000 would be is what would be left after we pay the 2.94, 4 million dollars. And we pay our normal expenses that we have this year. And these increases, we'd still have about 700 left. That's, that's one of the expenses that I was talking about earlier. I think his is gonna go up somewhere in the, I think he's asking for 200 and something more than we actually gave him last year. And so, we'd have to pay that. And then there's like three or, three or four others that are, they're gonna be much smaller than that. But on top of that, I'm trying to be very conservative when I make these comments, especially on television. But our mid-year true-up is gonna be more than a million dollars. I feel confident it's gonna be more than a million dollars. So, you're gonna add possibly another 2 million on top of that to reserves for this year. And our reserves are not gonna go down from this year to next year because we're not using any reserves to balance this budget. So, all we're doing is just adding to reserves or spending money unnecessarily if we don't give the money back as a, as a tax reduction. I mean, how many, I don't, how many reserves you need? I mean, I know it's good to have a big savings account at your house, but at what point do you let your house not need painting or put a roof on it or do whatever? And you let the whole thing go away because you got too many reserves?
I know, we had this conversation a couple of years ago when we actually had some good years of building our reserves up too fast and not using that money to, to, not to give back, to give back in services is where I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned.
That's where I'm concerned.
I think every, everybody would be funded at the same level of services that they had this year, plus the additional increases that we know is coming. Is there ever gonna be enough? I don't know that you could have enough money to buy all the shiny red fire trucks JR wants. But I'm just saying that, that everybody that we could come up, even including like, we had to redo the janitorial services contract that we passed in today's budget. We had to take out of it cleaning the floors and cleaning the windows to get it within the range of where we could afford it on the normal deal. So, if you look on this, I don't mean to keep bumping that on you guys. So, if you look on this sheet that I did, it basically got things on there just like the security services for the courthouse. The, in, the property insurance for us is gonna go up somewhere in the neighborhood of 300,000 dollars. And that's best guess at this time, and there's nothing we can do about that. I mean, it's just like the homeowner's insurance at your house. If you've got a bill lately, it went up. Well, ours did too. The, the security services at the courthouse, it's gonna go up about 120,000 dollars and there's just nothing we can do about it. You got the furnished security at the courthouse. The janitorial services went up 15,000. We paid for that today, we had to, because that's what it went up.
This is, I just want to interject so that everybody is clear, since this list is, is, was something you and I discussed and they were just provided it. This list is specifically excludes, we have not had a consideration for any increase for a BOCC department. These are the lists of external draws on the BOCC general fund that your BOCC operations have zero correlation to.
Except, we do have the money in there for 15 dollar minimum and 5% increase in payroll. So, we do have that included in, in what's written here is also included. So, all the payroll increases that we funded last year will be funded again this year under this plan, every bit of it.
That was one of the first questions I asked, but if I picked up on what you just said, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's no new positions a, at all.
No, sir.
Or, excuse me, no room for any planned new positions, just like we all agreed we needed some more people in animal control.
We've already done that, though.
I understand that, so we did that. But I'm sure that there are other departments that probably need some people. I'm just asking that, there's nothing in any of the departments that would have a new position in there? That would, that would, that is in the numbers you gave us, that we could-
No, sir, that list was intended to be exclusively those, those contracts that draw from the general fund, but have zero to do with our actual operations. So, all the things, and it does not include the things that came to light. So, we have not made any adjustments for building and grounds utilities, which we made an adjustment for today, for next year's budget. All of those things are yet to be determined. We just have to figure out where we're gonna start. Because at the end of the day, the way the budget process works is, is backwards in, in a math formula, not, not backwards in practice. You guys determine the amount of revenue and then we fund all the external partners for which we have zero ability to control their expenses. And then we fund the operational costs of the BOCC because that's where we do control. We can make cuts there if needed. So, what that list is, is an exclusive list of those entities that we know to date, the ones that have submitted. We still have a handful of court administrations that have not submitted theirs yet that are exclusive to board operations, but paid by general fund dollars.
You know, I welcome this discussion, I truly do. Because like you said, five years ago, we were wondering how we were gonna pay the damn light bulb if it blew out in a certain room.
And reserves were down too.
It was so tough. Now, our reserves have dwindled down to subpar levels. Over the last five years, we're able, we've been able to rebuild our reserves. I believe the true-ups, five years ago, we'd have a true-up and it might be actually in the negative instead of a positive for several million dollars. And so, this year, we're gonna have a several million dollar to the, to the good true-up, which means we have a great budget offer. But still, we have a true-up that's gonna be positive this year. And we've got a positive, because of the additional ad valorem tax revenues that have come this year, which is more of a percentage than what we've got in other years, basically because of the 3 million dollars. Commissioner, if we don't give the money back on a year when every fund's strong and everything's going on, you'll never give money back. Because if revenues go away or they get tight or they go flat for something, you can't give money back.
I don't think we're arguing about whether we're giving money back, it's a matter of how much. And the one of the concerns I have is, when we look at something that we just passed, which was, we had to move 60,000 dollars out of our reserves to pay for utilities. So, I mean-
Yeah, well, we got like 8 million dollars in reserves and not including the 3 million dollars that's coming in true-ups, so-
So, is that, is that just simply because our, our utilities increased and we didn't know that at the beginning of the year? And so, this is a line item, budget item?
That's additional money and then we're not sure that it's gonna go up the whole 60 this year. It's that that fund's depleted and we've got to put 60 in it. And that's the best guess we got at what we're gonna need to make it throughout the budget year. It's just like the other 70 that was put in there today too. For the, for the other fund that, that the, that has been depleted, you budget the best you can with the best guess you got. But it's like last year, it happened to us on diesel fuel.
Right.
Because diesel fuel doubled in cost during the last calendar budget calendar year, it hasn't this year. So, we had to do the same thing. You budget at the best, most accurate numbers you have at the time. But then, if you've got reserves, that's exactly what reserves are for, is to cover things like the 60,000 dollars. And at the 8.999, it's less, it's more money than we would have got if we hadn't have found the additional 3 million dollars.
I just want to make sure that 3 million-
Commissioner, I'd like to also clarify, I'm, I'm just trying to keep us in, I guess, bounds. Please understand that by the time we bring a budget amendment taking from reserves to support operational dollars, we've done everything internally we have the authority to do, which means we've scraped every last operating line that that department has for anything that may be remaining and already transferred that to utilize it. So, when we bring you a, a number of 60,000, that's based on an estimate. We did the calculation yesterday. FPNL alone is up 27% in non-fuel energy costs, if you take the fuel out of it. So, that's what you're seeing in that. And I do want to make sure you understand the budget amendment that came before you. It, we, we started out the year with a budget to operate the department, which we felt was sufficient. It wasn't, and we used the department's resources prior to coming back, before we utilized reserves. And so, that is, that is the budget amendment that you passed today.
Thank you. I think Mr. Adamsack.
Mr. Adamsack, y'all are just gonna have to raise your hand, this thing's gonna work again.
I'm not sure where to start with the dialogue that happened because I had an intention, but no, it's different. Julianne, with the new numbers, what is our anticipated reserve starting number next fiscal year?
New numbers, you're saying assessed value?
If we do 8.99?
Doesn't change, sir, because we do not use reserves to budget an operational balance.
What is the reserve number that we'll have the day one if we do 8.999?
Whatever you end this year with, and then that's yet to be seen. We used, we had a 60,000 and a 70,000 and two other budget amendments today that took from reserves. So, it's only July 11th. We have a lot of year between now and September 30th to ask me to project a reserve balance that you're in.
What's the reserve balance today after those two votes?
I would tell you it's roughly 11 million. You're required to keep roughly 10 million?
No, we're required to keep 6 million.
Well, FGFOA recommends 10-
I don't care about FGFOA, I think they're a bullshit organization.
Very well.
And I've said that several times, I'm saying it aggressively now because they're only taking into account the fact that we're not, we're not in a hurricane zone, we're not in a high probability zone. We're not. Putnam County is not, it's a safe zone. There's been assessments done that show us to Lake City is the safest parts of Florida. The GFOA, in their documents, which again, I'll reiterate, everyone should read them, says the 16% is based on the fact there's high impact zones on the oceanfront. They go, there's chapters on it. So, for those areas, I think it's great 16%. We're not required to do 16%, so let's stop saying that we're required to do 10%. We choose to do 16%. So, at 11 million, we're at like 20%. So, at some point, we have to decide, we have to decide as a commission, what is the percent we want to start with? Do we want to have 25% reserves? Do we want to have 16%? 16% would allow us to lower it 4, 4, 4%, which would be 1. some million extra dollars that you could utilize for other things, like giving back, okay? So, that's the starting point. We, we haven't established what the percent us as a board wants to keep as reserves. So, how do we budget backwards from that? But what is it? What percent do we tell you that we want to keep reserves? Do we say it's 21%?
You as a board have directed me as the budget officer to have the recommended-
I'm, I'm talking to the board. We, we haven't given you a reserve percentage. That's what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the percentage.
We're not gonna let this get out of hand today.
Right, right, so I'm, I'm asking, but, but the question was asked to the board, it wasn't asked to Julianne.
Yeah, that was rude, so-
That's fine.
I'm just gonna say this. We have asked them to take the money that we give them and to balance our budget without using reserves to balance that budget. That's what we've told them now, ever since I've been here for five years.
I have no issue with staff taking the direction of the vote of the board and running with it and doing a great job. You guys have done a great job with the direction you've been given overall by the board. I don't agree with the way we're doing it, never will probably.
I know that.
The percentages don't make any sense and for exact reason that, that you're talking about, Ms. Wilkinson.
According to you.
That, and this is my opinion, this is why, I'm qualifying it for exactly that reason. We don't know what people are asking for. So, Bill, you're saying, what about increasing staff, what about that? So, we're not taking that into account because we're just saying, take the percentage, go off in a hole, figure out what you're gonna do with that percentage, come back to us. So, instead of in the past, like the first, the first time I was in the thing, we, each department had came to us and said, I'm hoping to get two extra fire trucks, I'm hoping to employ two other people, I'm hoping to get an extra truck, I'm hoping to get scales. So, that was part of the budget process, that's not part of the budget process, Bill. So, we don't know the answer to your question. So, because no one's telling us that, because we're not asking them to tell us that. We're asking them to live in the confines of what we're giving them. So, first of all, that's, that's the first error in my opinion of the percentages, because it eliminates conversation. But beyond that, it's, the point is we're carrying too much reserves. I agree with Commissioner Turner on that. If, if we kept them stable at 21.8% or let's say that's where we're gonna go, we could build forward from there. That's, I'm fine with that, I just would love to hear us establish a percentage. I don't see a reason to carry 5% more than what's required by the GFOA, which is what we're doing now. And last year was even more. I understand we spend it out of there. It really isn't how we should do it in my opinion, but that should be exception, not the rule. And I've been guilty of making motions for things to purchase out of general fund, but that's also because I think we have too much money sitting in the general fund that is unutilized, that should be utilized if we're not giving it back to taxpayers for something that benefits the taxpayers. Because it shouldn't be a big savings account, which is how we seem to treat it, in my opinion. So, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm excited in a point that we'll get below 9 because I think we need to get to 8.5 at some point in order to have flexibility to protect our citizens as best as possible. I think we can do more. And if our objective today is to set a max millage rate, by way of hands, I'd be all for 8.999. At this time, setting it as the max, understanding we can go lower.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else to add? Are we ready to just tell them to proceed at the 8.9999?
I have one question. So, at 8.99, have we funded all of our departments?
9.99, we, we funded every department this year at the same level that we funded them at last year, correct, Julianne? We have, and we haven't added-
We do not know to date any department expenses that have increased because we, we, it is, we did several years ago attempt to bring departments in. We started the budget 14 million dollars upset and every single BOCC department was heartbroken at the end of that process because everything they asked for was denied because we had to get back into a budget. So, we cannot ask the departments to submit us budgets without knowing how much money is gonna be in the bank. And that is exactly where we are. This step starts that process.
And it's not like we're ignoring them either. That's actually, in my opinion, is- That's actually, in my opinion, is staff's responsibility to talk to their department heads and come up with reasonable budgets that they can live within that during that year, and present those budgets back to those budgets that they have a certain confidence level that they can work within and present that back to the board for approval. And, you know, I understand that, that it's been touted here today that they, they thought it was a really good thing to go out and get all the department heads, to give us their wish list and everything they wanted. Yet, you're right, it was 14 million over budget when we got it. Now, how in the hell anybody thinks that was a good thing in the budget process has got to be crazy. So all I'm saying at this point is that we need to, that, that's where we come up with a percentage. Some of the constitutionals on some years actually get a little more than they requested.
Exactly.
I think the clerk department this year actually got a little more than the request was because of the additional money and what have you. I think the supervisor of elections got a little extra than what he actually requested. If they don't use it, it'll come back to the board on the end of the year true up as money turned back in for the, for the commission to do something with. Yes, that's correct. And so they, they might. I mean, I mean, the sheriff's department gave us money back last year. It's just that they ended up needing it, so we gave it back to them. So I'm just saying that almost every department, every year, gives us a true up on some type of money returned at the end of the year. So that's money that goes into reserves that helps us build for next year's, next year's budget or the monies that come back. So I, I honestly believe, guys, that I'm being very conservative here. I didn't go after 8.5. It's not realistic that we could get that low. But I'm not saying that if we didn't find another 3 billion next year, I'm not gonna try to get to 8.5 if we got 5 million more revenue than we think's coming in. And we have got the additional revenue to cover the increases that are, that are right here that we know about, that are actually increases that we can't do anything about. So those are covered. We've got reserves to cover the things like the 60 and the 100, or the whatever we need to do, or if we want to build a park, or whatever the case may be. We've got millions of dollars in reserves to do that with. We've got the true up coming that I feel confident is gonna be more than a million dollars. I want it to be at least a million, where we can hopefully cover health insurance stuff with it. And, and so even with that, and then the end of the year monies that come in that we don't, that will go into reserves if we don't give them back to whoever turns the money in at the end of the year. We, we're in pretty good financial shape, guys. If we don't give it back now, we're not gonna ever. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, when we first, I first got here, we, things were bleak, there was no doubt. Commissioner Wilkinson, you hit the, I don't know if we'd have completely went bankrupt, but we weren't paying our bills.
There were people concerned about it.
And we were, even I ran on that, and it was very concerning to a lot of us. And we were able to dig in and, with a lot of hard work. And I remember Commissioner Pickens raising that millage rate. As conservative Republicans, it hurt. It was probably the worst thing I've ever done, sitting here on this board. It was terrible. So I think today's conversation, and, and I'll get to that very quickly, and then I want to defend the percentage budgeting. What we were seeing was the, the constitutionals are elected officials, just like we are. And they're given, they come to us with hat in hand. And when I first got here, they were always told, no, no, no. And I remember our previous sheriff throwing the keys down right there on a table and saying, y'all run the jail now. And he did that. You remember that? And he didn't have a, he didn't have a bit of problem throwing those keys down. I don't ever want to get to that position again, where we're fighting amongst ourselves. But I also want to get to the position where they're elected officials. And they know what their percentage is gonna be. They pretty, unless there's an anomaly, there ain't, none of them are complaining about this. So I don't know why we keep harping on that situation when they're elected officials, and they have to answer for their own budget, just like we do. So today, the conversation to me is, do we take a larger bite of the pie? Or a smaller bite of the pie? And do we try to avoid that going into it? I'm all about 9.9999, whatever, how many nines are on there?
8.99.
8.99, sorry about that. I'm sorry.
Not 9.
There's too many nines floating around the, the table. I'm all for it. I don't agree that in hard times, act of war, act of natural disaster, that we put the millage back on the citizens of Putnam County. I think we have to be very frugal in our point. And there's other ways to do that. Because you don't just respond that fast on a knee-jerk reaction. So I'm gonna say this, I, I, I don't mind if, if we can meet our obligations and we waive and consent at the 8.9999, but I want to know we're gonna meet our obligations. Because if it's 9.0356 that gets us to meet our obligations, I'm all for that, too. I just want to make sure that our citizens do, does get a tax relief and that our departments are whole and our level of service, whether we think we're providing the level of service or not, is what the citizens want from us. And that's where we have elected constitutionals that, that have to answer for their part, and we have to answer for our part. But we do need to keep a level of service alive. So I'll waive and support the 8.999. But if it's gonna take a little more, and we can only go to 9.035, whatever that number is, we'll know that in a few weeks. So thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you for those comments. I truly believe with the numbers that I presented today has been a pretty conservative budget for you. Worked hard, and Julianne worked hard. We've worked hard together to try to come up with these increases. And as long as we agree that, that that money from that 20% that the board usually would keep, the, that would have to be used to balance the budget, as long as we agree to that, we're still gonna have 700,000, and I'm using roundabout dollars, but about $700,000 that we're gonna be used to pay for things that are not included in the budget at this time, that would, that could be used for reoccurring expenses within the budget, too. Not just of one-time expenses such as capital or whatever, even though you could use it on capital, but it's, it, it could also be used on reoccurring expenses. So with that being said, you know, there's another thing that needs to come, needs to be said about this percentage thing that's, that just seems to always be lost in the, in the shuffle, is if all the constitutional officers came before the board and they got a little bit of increase that year, because they well needed it, or whatever, the board took it on the chin. The board didn't get to give employees raises.
That's right.
The board didn't get to give the public works people raises, because they got less money than they got last year. That was my biggest reason for putting a percentage in there. Because the board of county commissioners, just like the sheriff's department, just like everybody else, they deserve to know what their percentage is gonna be going forward. If there's an increase that year in ad blorum revenue that we can, that we pass on, then fine, everybody gets to share in the increase. But what happened two years before we used the percentage is the increases went up in certain other areas, but the board took it on the chin for everyone. So, and I'm not gonna call out a particular constitutional officer, I'm really not gonna do it, but if one of those decided to give a raise that we didn't give on the county side, not saying they did, but if they did, then there's nothing we could do about that. And basically, if they needed more money to give their people raises, we'd have to cut positions on our side, because we couldn't even pay what we already had. That happened to us. That's why I went with the percentages. With the percentages, everybody gets to participate. The board gets some if it goes up, the sheriff gets some if it goes up, the clerk gets some if it goes up, everybody gets to participate at the same level. God forbid if we ever get a bad part, that it goes down somewhere in the future. It'll be the same thing, too. Everybody gets to participate on the way down. Uh, finally, I've got you mad, come on.
No, I, the only, my only ask is if, if you don't want to name anyone apart from that, and I appreciate that, just at least let everyone know who it was on their share.
Exactly. If it was you, I'd have, I'd have called you out. Have I gotten any smart-ass texts from you this morning yet? Let me look. Okay, so anyhow, I truly believe that it'd be a conservative budget at 8.9999, four nines, with giving us more revenue than we would've got if we hadn't have found that additional money, that we have a certain level of, of confidence that it's gonna be continuing. I really do. So I think it's very conservative. It gives us 800,000, or 700,000 to play with. That's a bad word, term, play with. 700,000 for additional expenses that we don't, are not aware of what they are yet, the increased budget.
To, to cover the unexpected increases.
That's right.
That's the word.
That's, yeah, the unexpected recurring increases.
Yes, like...
Unexpected ends, un...
Utilities.
Yes, exactly. Unexpected increases that are not recurring, that's what, but, that's what revenues are, that's what reserves are for.
Okay.
To, to pay for things that are not reoccurring, one-time expenses, capital expenditures, whatever, that are not reoccurring. That's what, that's what reserves are, are there for. In my book, that's what they're there for. But there's certain things, if you have a contract to buy blinker fluid, I figured you, you two down there would get a kick out of that. But anyhow, if you have a contract to buy something, and you know that it's gonna be the same every year, that's reoccurring. If it goes up and you don't budget for that additional income or that additional cost with reoccurring, with reoccurring expenses, then you just, you've shot yourself in the foot. So we've tried to come up with every, every cost that we could come up with on this paper, and that'll still give us $700,000 to cover the smaller reoccurring costs that come along in the thing, and it will not use our reserves to balance our budget. I, I tried to come up with a workable plan, hopefully y'all gonna see that. But, and I surely didn't do it by myself. I guided down that lane by the guidance of our budget officer.
So once we advertise, we cannot go back up?
We're not doing that today.
We're not doing that today. What we're doing today is we're agreeing to let her formulate a budget using that revenue.
I thought she said... Essentially is what you're, although it's not a final vote, this is the last meeting you're gonna have, where you as a board can give me direction on the final millage that's going to be advertised. So when you leave today, whatever the consensus is, is what will be on the agenda for official vote next time. There is a very strenuous, laborious process by which you can exceed your maximum rate, but it is not one I recommend. You do not want to do it, is the end of, i- is there a legal venue to do it for extenuating circumstances? Yes. But you do not want to set a maximum rate and then need to be above it.
I agree with that. And going at 8.9999, I don't believe we're gonna have to go above it, because like I've said multiple times, we've got all the expenses we knew about outside that are covered. We have $700,000 that we haven't spent yet, we could use towards recurring. And we've got a, a true up for our reserves coming, and we've got the existing reserves that are at mil, at millions of dollars already. How much of a savings account do we need?
For the public's sake and for everybody up here, we will not use any of the reserves to balance the budget.
Right.
Just so take that, that, I just want to make sure that the public does not think that we're fixing to, to create a budget using reserves as re, to offset reoccurring expenses.
I'm not even saying that we should think about doing that. I'm saying that we can bu, balance this budget without using reserves and still you, the increases in here that we came up with the other day and still have 700,000 additional dollars to use before other reoccurring expenses that may come up in your budget, whether it be whatever it may be.
What has to come right off the top is the extra 250 for the property ariser. So when we talk about what we're gonna have left, well, there will be, at that number, there will be a portion for anything that we don't know today as of July 11th, for what needs to be incorporated for October 1st.
Okay. I understand the process. I understand that it'd be a lot easier for the county if we just didn't give any of the $3 million back, we just figured out a way to spend it the best way we could, that we gave everybody more employees, more money, more, more shiny fire trucks, whatever the case may be, that we tried to do that. I don't have that in me. I'm a conservative Republican, and when we get a $3 million windfall that we didn't know we had two weeks ago, I want to at least give $2 million of it back to the public. I can't help but do that. So I, I don't see any way that we cannot take a windfall. The first time we reduced the millage rate, two, two years ago, three years ago? Two years ago, I guess it was? We actually came from a windfall at the end of the year that we didn't know we were gonna have, that the money came in, and instead of just rolling it into reserves and figuring out a way to spend it, we reduced taxes by doing that. That's what you ought to do. Guys, we control the money, but it ain't our money.
Right.
It's the citizens' money. We need to give it back when we're not, when we don't have a bona fide reason for having it.
I understand that, I understand that, Mr. Chairman, I speak. I want to clarify something. The commissioners that were on this board before me, along with Commissioner Harvey, they governed in tough times. I mean, we were in the recession, which to me, in South Putnam, it became a depression. I'm telling you, it was tough. So they did the best that they could, and thank the Lord that they had put reserves back to be able to use those, and that's what this board has done, too. I'm in agreement of giving back, but I'm also just really, I'm having a hard time understanding if we have a goal of 8.99, to not roll this in at 9.1, and that we can always decrease it. Is that correct?
You can go below, you cannot go above your maximum.
Okay, is it, is it a lot of extra work? I'm just, I'm, I'm just asking.
Go below?
No, to, to do it at 9.1, and then, okay, yes, all this money is coming in, we've got this, everything. There's new, maybe new unforeseen expenses that you've been able to add in, and we've got everything covered.
No, it's easier to budget assuming your, your projection is that if we budgeted at 9.1, there would be some nominal or, or amount of money that would be in excess. The, the, what the board needs to decide is, if we're gonna budget at 9.1, do we go ahead and divvy out the constitutionals? And then do we have the conversation with them? Do you need all the 9.1? So from my standpoint, I can budget any way you want to budget, but some of those foundational pieces have to be directed by you all, i.e., did, did, did you follow what I'm saying? So if you're gonna, if you're gonna project a budget out at a millage rate other than what you're gonna send to the July number, so i.e. what you're, what the scenario you said, we're gonna try to, to have a goal of 8.9, but we're gonna work it up at 9.1, and then if we fall somewhere in between that, we're gonna, we're gonna be adjusted.
Will.
Then the question becomes, how do I, how do I communicate that to the constitutionals? And how much give and take do we have? And then if we ultimately then reduce it between July and October, then in your final budget hearing, you would simply put the reduced millage rate down.
Please keep in mind, though, we're dealing with the damn government. If you tell them to build to a budget at 9.9, they're gonna fill up every dime to the 9.9. So I, we can relatively conservatively get to 8.9999 and let them budget at that amount, and it covers our constitutionals of what they've asked for, and it gives us some additional money for reoccurring expenses. If we budget at 9.1, you don't think they're not gonna be able to fill that up with needs and costs and wants? I'm just saying.
The want, the wants, I'm not, I'm understanding of the wants, needs, needs. Okay, I'm good. We waive and support, we need to motion, what we need to do.
Just waive at this point. Does anybody not want to do 8.9999 and see if we can make it?
I'm good, go for it.
Three of us are waiving, the two on the end, okay.
I'm gonna go.
All right. I was hoping we wouldn't have to do that again, but finding that additional revenue... I was hoping we wouldn't have to do that again, but finding that additional revenue made it that we had to. So, um, with that being said, I'm gonna move down the agenda, if I can find my place after all that. So, and we're gonna move into public comment on miscellaneous items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow the citizens an opportunity to bring matters of attention to the board. It's not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in the lit- in, or debate about matters in which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Excuse me, I got new glasses and I'm having trouble making them look at this paper. Um, please limit it to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed at the meeting room entrance and should be submitted prior to the meeting to the deputy clerk who sits on my left, your right. And, um, is there, do you have any cards today? Is there anybody in attendance who would like to speak in public comment? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, commissioners, staff, and those in the audience. Gator Deloach, Sheriff of Putnam County, one thirty, Ori Griffin Boulevard, Palaca, Florida. I just wanna take an opportunity to commend staff and this commission for working so diligently to arrive at this conclusion today. I know it wasn't easy, and this has been a difficult budget year for all of us. Uh, as you're aware, there were some significant changes and reforms in the Florida retirement system, that unfortunately was placed directly onto the backs of the county. And going back to two thousand eleven, when that original retirement reform was passed by the legislature, essentially what happened is the state was, uh, experiencing a budgetary shortfall of roughly three and a half billion dollars. Uh, they leveraged the strength of the Florida retirement system to balance the budget, and now have passed the buck and put that directly back onto the backs of this county commission and all of our taxpayers here. Uh, I fully support the retirement reform that was passed in two thousand eleven, and as a fellow conservative, I believe that individuals should be required to pay into a retirement system, even if it's at a nominal rate of three percent. I think that you should have some skin in the game. Um, I do not, however, believe that, uh, the legislature as a whole should have placed that burden directly back onto the county. Uh, but the unfortunate reality is, they did. I don't know what the county's portion was, but I can tell you that the sheriff's office portion uh, to fund that, uh, that unfunded mandate that was placed on, back on our backs was roughly one million dollars, and I think the county's was pretty close to that. So for us to be able to tentatively roll the millage back to eight point nine nine percent, faced with that type of additional financial burden, uh, I think is worthy of a commendation for everyone, staff, uh, and members of the commission included, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak under public comment? Um, Honorable Clerk of Court, Matt Reynolds.
Good morning, Chairman. Um, just real quick, I would like to publicly state as well, I wholeheartedly agree with what Sheriff Deloach just stated about, um, the legislature and, and, uh, the FRS changes this year. We are fortunate that we don't have high-risk employees like the county and the sheriff's office, so, um, I would also like to state, um, that, um, I'd just ask for everybody to keep our county administrator, Mr. Suggs, and your thoughts and prayers. It's a very difficult time for him and his family, so. Um, and the only other thing I have this morning is I'd like to thank the interns, uh, for coming down this morning. We started an intern program this year and trying to get, um, local students involved in, in local government, get them exposed to the court system, getting exposed to comptroller functions of the county, uh, tax deeds, as we discussed earlier, all of those different things, we're kinda rotating them through, so. But I wanted to thank them for coming this morning, that's all I have. Thank you.
Did they have an exciting time?
Next on the agenda is, uh, Colonel Commando. Um, Ms. Young, did you have anything you wanted to state this morning? Or, uh, Mr. Grimes, did you have anything you wanted to state this morning? Okay, uh, we'll move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner Adams, Zach.
Yeah, just thankful we got rain finally out in west, far west Putnam. We, 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 those rainstorms that came on the fourth and other days never made it out quite to our area, so the last few days we got some rain, so that was good. Um, like I've said several times, there's always something to do in Putnam County. There's a lot of different activities, there's just too many to name, and just the fact that you can get outside and go on trails and get on the river, or fish off the shore, or, or, there's just so many options to do in this county. It's, it's partly why we live here and why we love it, and, uh, just continue to look out for those different things that are happening. And, uh, I just wanna say, as far as this budget process goes, it's, it's important that we have these discussions. It's important that we have these discussions in, in the public eye. And, yeah, sometimes it gets heated, but I have no animosity towards anyone that sits up here with me. I have no animosity towards staff. We give them direction, they do what we're told. I don't always agree with the direction. Sometimes other people don't always agree with the direction either. That's, that's part of being an elected official. It's part of being staff in the government agency, is, uh, it's not quite as cut and dry as, you know, if you're working for a company, if you're working for a company, you're pretty much just given orders and you do them, and then you move forward. Um, so there, there is debate here, and the fact that we can't debate, like in other states and other governments, outside of this forum and we're sitting here, um, it makes it so we have to have this debate in front of y'all, and, and I think that's healthy in many ways, so. Um, appreciate everyone's input today, and if I get a little bit heated during budget talks, it's probably gonna happen for the rest of the time that I'm a commissioner, and even as a citizen, I'm gonna come out here and, and sit out there like I did before I got elected, so, um, you know, budget's important to me. I, I believe we can do more, but this is a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do wanna let y'all know, we had a great July fourth Independence Day celebration in the town of Enelacan. It wasn't as hot as it could have been. Uh, July third was brutal, but July fourth was a little bit better, and we had a great time, great turnout. Uh, no one got hurt, and everybody had a good time. I wanna make an announcement that recognize one of our citizens. On June thirtieth, Governor Ron DeSantis appointed John Browning to the Historical Commission. Uh, that's a very important spot, and, uh, it's very important to Putnam County. As you know, John's on the Transportation Commission, and now the Historic Commission also again. And, uh, those, those appointments don't come lightly, and I know John works very di- diligently on these appointments, so, um, and doing the right thing for Florida. On Thursday, Mr. Chairman, I have a public safety meeting that I cannot attend. Vacation Bible School is going on at our church, and I committed to that prior to that. So I was gonna see if we could get another commissioner, and maybe Commissioner Wilkinson. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I mean-
What time is it?
Believe it's nine AM. I know you usually come after the fact, but I didn't know if you had an opportunity to come at that one.
I can't do it. I'll be out of town. I've got to swear in, uh, Les Sims to be the president of the Florida Roofers Association Thursday.
Congratulations, Les. But if anybody else, if it doesn't fit your schedule, I'll put-
I can do it, so it's at nine o'clock?
Thank you for taking that.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Chairman, that's all my comments.
Commissioner Pickens.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Turner. Um, Matt, I appreciate you recognizing the interns. I think that's a great program we've used over here, and if you young ladies were just wondering, can Mr. Turner, or Chairman Turner speak Samatio? Um, so, but he's, but he's, he's pretty sharp, but, uh, anyway, I just wanna say, I took the time, I was invited to, uh, the last swim meet of, I believe it's the Sharks, is that correct, Julian? Uh, Brendan McGibbons, who sits on our Parks and Recreation, uh, Board, her son is actually the coach, and so, uh, I was invited to attend, so I did, uh, July first, Saturday. I got there about thirty minutes after it started, and when I came to the swimming pool, I said, my goodness, there's a lot of people here. And, and, uh, Kevin from Parks and Recs met me, and he says, I said, man, this is a lot of people. He said, this is a small meet, so they had over a hundred and fifty people there. And usually the, with the big meets, it's three hundred, and that's, now that's participants and, and coaches and parents. Uh, but Lee Duran was working a computer, so was Miss Gibbons. It was very organized. The facility was in great shape, uh, everything went really well, and I was really, um, impressed. And so they were, Putnam County is proud to have that facility over there, and I'm sure any, any team that comes from out of town uh, is impressed also. Um, also, I wanna thank, um, staff and everybody that was involved, animal control facility people, for what they do, but to move this building forward. I know we're not gonna please everybody with the design, but at least we're moving this thing forward, because we've been talking about this thing for probably ten years, I believe, and it's gonna come to, um, fruition, and I think it's great. Uh, we can add things at the end, like I've had a lot of people ask me about the chain links for the dog runs and things like that, and those are things that we'll be able to do after, after this, uh, project is completed. Um, I also wanna mention, um, I sat on the Georgetown Fruitland Volunteer Fire Department Board for a few years. I was actually president for a couple of years, and I wanna commend the, the Fire Department for coming to a point where they decided that they needed to do something, and because we still need, uh, service out there. But as Commissioner Harvey mentioned, uh, volunteerism in, in civic groups and, and even churches and things like that, it's just not what it used to be. They have been a tremendous part, and I think will still be a tremendous part of our firefighting service and EMT service, um, but it's just time to, to make some changes. So I commend them for doing that and for JR to looking into that and accepting that building, and, and hopefully we can continue to, uh, fund time, some type of service out there, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilkinson.
Thank you. Um, I agree with Paul Adams, Zach. Uh, thank you for having the discussion and the debate. I think it's healthy for us to do that, and, uh, great for the citizens to see. And I think that we all learn individually a little bit more as we go along. And so since this is my first budget cycle, I'm learning as I'm going through, and, um, I appreciate the discussion. In that, in that, uh, discussion, I would like for us to, uh, in the future, discuss a capital plan. I feel like we, we've got money in reserves, but we don't really have a plan. And, uh, you know, there's bridges and there's other things in this county that we need to be working on, and I would like whether we workshop, shop that, uh, chair, whatever we wanna do, but I'd like to see us somehow come up with some kind of a capital plan for our future, and what we're gonna do with, with some of those reserves. That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I also agree that it's very important that we have these budget discussions, and I think we actually have come a long way in the last couple of years trying to make this process simpler and broke down with more transparency. The constitutionals know what they're gonna get pretty much as soon as we do on our percentages. Nobody, nobody could ever, um, believe that we were gonna be fortunate enough to come up with an extra three million dollars in the last two weeks. That's unheard of. So, we were just very fortunate. And then when we first heard about it, that it turned out to be that it was good, accurate, too. That's even better. So, um, it, it's, it'll really help. And it's kinda like Commissioner Harvey said, and Commissioner Pickens, it was hard to raise taxes. I was here like six weeks and I hadn't raised taxes when I got appointed.
As the governor appointed you to.
Yeah, right, yeah, I came right in on top of that. We had no choice.
That's right.
Cause we didn't have an opportunity to budget. They didn't do budgeting like we do this year. They basically presented a budget, and you got to vote on it or didn't, and that's about what they did before that time. Uh, Commissioner Harvey was here several years. He could speak to it a lot better than I could, but I saw, they didn't know anything. It was not transparent. They didn't tell you line item, they didn't, they couldn't answer questions. If they could, they wouldn't. I'm just telling you, things are different nowadays to the better, a thousand percent better than what they were six years ago. Uh, we do have transparency. They can't answer questions. It may not be like right now on the spot, but they have the ability to research it and find out the information that you need. That has not always been the case around Putnam County in the past. Um, I alluded to it a little earlier that, uh, in the meeting today, that tomorrow there's an insurance committee meeting at one thirty. I think this has the possibility of being one of the most important insurance committee meetings that they've ever had. I asked Chairman Davis to call this, uh, meeting, it, uh, if he would. I asked him to. And with the sole purpose of this meeting, trying to be ways to make the healthcare system for Putnam County more sustainable. More sustainable for our employees, more sustainable for the, for the, uh, being able to pay for the health insurance without raising premiums. Last year, we had to end up taking some of our mid-year true-up reserves and using them towards trueing up the health insurance system. We were hoping that there could be more changes made between then and now that would help it, be more sustainable. That's what they're gonna try and work on tomorrow, and I'm going to ask that the, it's a, it's a meeting that's been advertised, so all commissioners can show up. Anybody that can show up would be greatly appreciated. Um, I'm trying to get there myself, but I'm supposed to be in Orlando at four, so anyhow. But anybody that can come, the main reason for having this is trying to come up with incentives and ways that would not cut the amount or the access for employees to health insurance, but would incentivize employees to seek the attention they need, their medical attention they need from a different place. And it could be anything from setting up some teledoc facilities in different locations and letting, you know, maybe three of them on the board side and one at the clerk's office that he would if he wanted to, or whatever. And so, instead of somebody having to wait till they got off work, and then they don't have a doctor, so then they end up going to the emergency room at the hospital and have a three thousand dollar deal that they could have handled with teledoc that morning.
Right.
So, but, you know, that might be an option, to set up a teledoc thing where people could come in and, and, um, and they wouldn't even have to take off from work. They could just, if you come in and got a cold, you go in there and you talk to teledoc that morning. You know, have one at Public Works and at EOC, and maybe one down here. A room that the people could go and see instead of having to wait till they get off. And that's just one of, uh, of many different things I hope that they come up with tomorrow of ways that can, that we can make health insurance sus- more sustainable. Because I'm telling you right now, at the rate that it's going, right today, health insurance for Putnam County is not sustainable. All it would take is one year with no additional reserves, no additional true-up reserves, no additional monies, and the whole system will bust right in its tracks. So, I, I think that we do have an opportunity right now to try to get us moving in a direction that we can maybe find some savings and incentives to the employees to where, um, you know, and, and I know it's everybody's first reaction to just say something along the lines of, well, just make the employees pay more. Well, there's a problem with that, too. And the problem is, if you make the employees pay more money-
They're gonna keep you.
Not just that, what happens is, it's the same thing that happened at the school system a few years ago. Whereas the costs get too expensive, then all the healthy young people get out of the system and go buy their own health insurance somewhere else. That came from Brian. He was on their insurance committee and told me about that, but, and Jul- and Julian did, but, I mean, it's true if you think about it. If you make your, if you make health insurance cost more for your employees than what they could buy it for on your street, all your young health employees leave, and then you're really in trouble in your health insurance business. So we've got to find a way to incentivize everybody without losing access and still make the program to where at some point it would at least be sustainable to some degree. I don't know what that's gonna look like. I'm requesting the help of commissioners. I'm requesting the help of the insurance committee to come up, and nothing's off the table to at least discuss in that committee. So hopefully we can come up with some real meat and potatoes, ways that we can incentivize and help change the health insurance to where it's better for everybody involved. Um, with that being said, if anybody doesn't have anything additional today, this meeting is now adjourned.